A large part of our job is collecting trash, brush and bulk. Beginning October 1st, we are making several changes to the way we provide those services in order to make them more efficient and cost effective. I've asked our refuse and recycling supervisor Jeremy Klein to explain some of the new guidelines that everyone needs to know.
Hello. As Gaynell said, several changes are coming. First, you will no longer have to purchase a decal every year to put on your trash cart. Instead, every customer will have a $10 fee added to their water utility bill each month. It's important to remember that regardless of whether you have a 32 gallon or a 64 gallon trash cart, the $10 fee on your water utility bill will be the same. You'll still be able to purchase blue bags for overflow trash that will not fit in your cart. If you currently have the 32 gallon but would like to upgrade to the 64 gallon cart, call Citizens First at 856-CITY and we'll swap it out for you. We have been reviewing our bulk and brush procedures with the aim of providing you with better service. Brush and bulk will be picked up once a month on your street according to the day your trash is collected. For example, if your trash pickup day is Monday, your brush and bulk will be collected the first full week of each month. For Tuesday, it's the second full week, and so on. To keep brush and bulk off the streets as much as possible, we're asking you not to put anything curbside until the Saturday before your monthly pickup.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our April 22nd, 2025 City Council Work Session. This evening, on behalf of Lynchburg City Council, thank you all for joining us for tonight's meeting. We'll gather tonight to hear from you. We are gathered tonight to hear from you. We want to hear from you. To hear from the citizens, on behalf of the following items: real property tax rate, water, sewer and stormwater rates, FY 2026 budget, both operating and capital. And this is how we're going to proceed. Speakers will be called in the order they have signed up. Everyone on the list, once everyone on the list has spoken, I'll open up the floor for anyone who, anyone else who did not sign up to speak. Each speaker must have, must state their name and locality of residence. Individuals have three, three minutes to speak. If you're speaking for a group, you have five minutes. Group speakers must say which group they represent. Each group must get one, gets one spokesperson. If you have printed material for council members, please put them on the table to the left. After all public comment, public comment, public comment, public clearance, public hearing will be closed and we will move to the next item. I will now turn you over to the Clerk of Council, Ms. Finney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few housekeeping items. We are a packed house tonight, plenty of people here, and council wants to hear from all of you. So, as he mentioned, I'll be reading from a list. I'll call a series of four names. To my left down this aisle, you'll see numbered circles, one, two and three on the aisle. The first person called, just make your way to the podium. The ones two through four respectively line up and we'll just keep it moving like that. As he also mentioned, he will open the floor after the list has been exhausted. If you just want to line up again on those dots to keep things rolling, that'd be wonderful. That is all I have. Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Yes, Ms. Finney. Mr. Deemer will pray for us and then we'll do the pledge.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the country we live in, we thank you for the city, we thank you for the Commonwealth of Virginia. Lord, we are truly blessed in so many ways and we are grateful to you for being here with us. Give us wisdom, give us civility, give us kindness toward each other. Bless our time and our efforts with your wisdom. We pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Finney will call our first speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for the real property tax rate public hearing. We have Dr. Beth White, followed by Katrina Ing, Hope McRory representing We The People, and Peter Sepharati.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Dr. Beth White, Ward Three. I was told about a month ago by a former council member after, for some reason, reviewing my property assessment, that he bet I would not stand before you tonight and say what I'm about to say. Here I am. Last year, I stood before you and asked you to not cut the legs out from under our city by reducing the real estate tax as low as we did. We heard from the city manager, the chief financial officer and others who are experts in their field about the impact this would have on our city. Your arguments were the same thing, we're fighting for the taxpayers. What happened to fighting for all of your citizens? Do you care about all of them or just the ones who happen to pad your pockets? Like everyone, my assessment went up significantly. Living in Fort Hill and attending the meetings, I was prepared for the anticipated 30% increase. Imagine my surprise when it was not a 30% increase but a 50% increase. Five, zero. That means that at the current rate, my tax will increase nearly $570 over the next year. While that is a tough pill to swallow, for the sake of my fellow citizens, I am willing to pay the price. We live in a city and with that comes expected services. According to the latest census records, 49.1% of our citizens own their home. Again, that means that vast majority of our citizens, 50.9% of them, instead rent their homes. Now, I know that last year, many of you argued that the lower tax rate would be passed along by landlords to their tenants. Yet I'm curious as to how many actually lowered the cost of renting. I'm willing to bet that number is extremely low. We also know that if we are forced to equalize, then city services will have to be cut. I also know that your argument will be that with the current rate, we expect to be approximately $11.14 million over our budget revenue. So let's return that money back to the taxpayer. Actually, you mean the wealthy 49% who own a home? What about the 50.91% who don't? 100% of our citizens use our services that this city provides. We are a city, not a county. When was the last time that any of you went to the library, visited a museum, walked in a park or any of the multitude of services that we receive in the greatest city in the Commonwealth? I would encourage you to do so now if you haven't. If you continue to vote the way that I suspect you will, we won't have these services much longer.
Next up, we have...
We would have no cheers, jeers, clapping, or anything else, okay?
Okay, Mr. Mayor. We have Katrina Ing, followed by Hope McRory representing We The People, then Peter Sepharati, and then Carl Hutcherson. Katrina Ing? Katrina Ing, okay.
Mr. Sepharati?
We'll hope, move to, it's actually, um, Hope McRory with We The People, followed by Peter Sepharati, followed by Carl Hutcherson, and then Charles Gammon representing Chestnut Hill and Fort Hill homeowners. Ms. McRory's next.
We have a government that is by, of, by, and for the people. And when we were founded, we wanted to be different. We didn't want to be under a king. And slowly but surely, we have been taken over by a king in the name of bureaucrats. We still have elections and we elect you, but you have to be able to get information from the city. And I was told earlier this week that that has been becoming a problem. And I don't like asking one of my representatives what's going on and they say we can't get the information. So this needs to be opened up and the people elected need to come back to us if they can't get the information. And this needs to get out and I, I don't think that should be a problem. The culture has changed from Democrat to Republican and the Republicans are supposed to stand for smaller government and they're supposed to be really, really interested in the family and children. And one thing that I realized when thinking about this, everybody is affected and need a house, whether they're renting or whether they own. And so everybody is affected by this, like the lady farmer before me. Like I said, everybody's affected by this and you, so many mayors want to say, "I'm a mayor of all the people." And that's, I've always thought, that's not true. But that is true because everybody is affected, everybody needs a roof over their head and everybody needs food. And if you watch what's going on in our culture, it's not good. You know, we need to be thinking that we have taken care of some of these things. And I'm also very, very interested in power and water. I really am because I think most people are thinking about all these other things and with the news and everything, that's what you're thinking about. But these, we need to think about the basics and they need to be taken care of. I've mentioned it to some of you on City Council, to make a list of things that are very important and that you look at that list every time you have to vote on something. Is this really necessary? Because some things should be done by the private sector, not by government. Because we have to obey government, you know, we, we just don't have any choice. I would like to speak to each one of you on City Council. And Mayor Taylor, I think you really care for people. Most of you all say you're Christians and I think we need to really be concerned about families and children. And people are having a really hard time. You know, it's not like we're all sitting around with a lot of money that you just can draw in. And I think, you know, I, I really believe that you're interested in that. And this is a way of taking care of them, make sure they have a roof over their head. Because I have not asked any of the City Council people how many people have not paid their taxes and I think that's something we need to look into. Because I don't know anything. I would, I'd like to know more about the city. Mr. Deemer, he is very interested in lowering the taxes and I think that's very, very important because that will affect all of us. I mean, unless you live under a bridge. And, uh, let's see, uh, the former mayor Stephanie. It's my understanding that you don't pay the taxes because of your husband's being in the service and I'm so thankful for his service. And I think because of that, you should consider the rest of us that do have to pay it and be for lower taxes, or excuse yourself in the voting. And two, I want to say to you, thank you for your service last time. I brought the flowers mainly for you because I think you took on a job and so many jobs look easy until you have to do them. And, you know, I appreciate your service. Thank you. Let's see, Mr. Verrady. It's my understanding that you, you are working for a Realtor, Mr. Miller, Carl, you're not, but you have, you have been in real estate. That's okay. I mean, I'm, I'm not criticizing you. No, no, I saw your picture in the magazine, sorry. But, you know, I think the real estate people, if you have been connected with them at all, would be able, would be happy to say, you know, not only are we wanting to get a good price for you, but we also voted against property taxes. Okay, let's go on. Mr. Missians, you have four boys and you, you want the best for them. And what you all do is going to affect the children that are coming on. And Jacqueline, you have two. So, Mr. Wilder, I know you like children too.
Thank you.
Do we have a cow here? Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor. Up next, we have Peter Sepharati, followed by Carl Hutcherson, then Charles Gammon representing Chestnut Hill and Fort Hill homeowners, then Greg Berry. If y'all would like to start lining up.
Mr. Sepharati, could you please state your name and locality, please?
My name is Mr. Sepharati, first name's Peter, Ward One. Yes, it's true, I have joined the hands-off crowd. I've seen the light. I want to talk about the budget. First of all, I want to commend all of you last time who voted for the current 89 cent rate, sped up, in spite of all the forecasts of fiscal doom from those who want to spend other folks' money just because they own real estate. It turns out that budget priorities were funded and there has been extra money available for over-budget spending, even in spite of the rate going down. And by the way, one of the reasons is that even though the rate went down, we paid a lot more in taxes on our house. So thank God you lowered the rate. Lynchburg's fiscal stress is due for spending on wants that have a lower priority for what the city's needs are. And this is a recurring pattern. It leads many of us to question the judgment to some on City Council and on the staff on which they rely who make recommendations. I urge you to be fiscally conservative. Most taxpayers have not received a raise in income and inflation has stressed out our budgets too. Keep the rate equalized, which is the fair thing to do. We really can't afford to pay for anything except that which is absolutely needed and that goes for our households and for the city. Future loan costs on, of what, 80 or 100 or who knows how many millions of dollars that are going forward on CIP projects are going to be baked into future budgets on top of everything else that's needed in Lynchburg and we need a lot. That means that future taxes, meaning the tax rate, is going to have to go up to cover this stuff at some point. So we have taxes increases already baked into our budgets. We really need to be careful about adding other things that are going to cause more stress on people trying to pay their taxes. And I'd like to ask, why do property taxes need to pay for so many questionable things? I think the City Council should try some other avenues. Maybe City Council should try encouraging folks who want a higher tax rate than equalization to pay the extra portion that they're proposing. I mean, you'll accept extra money in tax receipts, won't you? Anyways, that's just an idea, I'm sure you guys have others. Chris, I, Councilmember Farley, I just want to say that I think being in real estate is an awesome, awesome career and I, I think more people should get involved because then maybe they'd afford to own a house and they could be the, the subject of all the darts that people are throwing. It's really great. So, thank you for your work on City Council, I appreciate it. We're praying for you, you have wisdom, do the right thing, be righteous, and I'm done. Thank you.
Next up is Carl Hutcherson, followed by Charles Gammon, then Greg Berry, followed by Stephen Jordan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Councilmember Reed, Councilmember Timmer, Mrs. McRory, and all of you gentlemen who are part of our City Council and ladies and gentlemen in the audience. I mentioned that specifically, ladies and gentlemen, because we do not treat our ladies as we should. And until we start to respect and reflect on who we are as men, we're going to be in a sad state. I've come tonight to speak on behalf of, of the real estate. I live in Ward Two, which is the oldest, oldest ward, really the oldest ward in the city. There's a lot of rental housing in Ward Two. We're reminded that there's more rental housing than there are homeowners. I'm fortunate enough to be a homeowner and I'm thankful for that. I'm thankful that we are able to live in a community where our real estate taxes have been either less or on par with other cities in our Commonwealth. However, at the last round of tax, taxes, real estate taxes, we lowered the tax rate to 89 cents. And that's where it stands today. It is my hope and my reflection that we do not lower it anymore. If we're to remain a city that is able to compete with other cities, then we must learn to maintain the rates that are commensurate with a city that's moving forward and not backwards. We've got to make sure that as we deliberate, and you've got a lot of work to do, but as we deliberate, we're mindful of the fact that there are some citizens, maybe even the majority, who would pay a little more in order to see our city move forward. There are people who would like to come into our city, but because of the fact that we have become a city that is not as welcoming as we have been, then we've got to pay down the road. Our children will suffer, our grandchildren will suffer, we may not even be around to see. I thank all of you for your efforts and your work on City Council. I know it is not an easy task, but I do know this, truth will always ring true. Thank you so much.
Next up, we have Charles Gammon representing Chestnut Hill and Fort Hill homeowners, followed by Greg Berry, then Stephen Jordan, then Jan Willinger.
Please state your name and locality, please.
Name's Chuck Gammon, live in the city of Lynchburg, Fort Hill, Chestnut Hill area. I'd like to thank you, Mayor Taylor, Members of City Council and staff. Just a quick comment, no city ever taxed itself into prosperity, higher taxes do not. Contrary to some explanations make a city more successful. In fact, history, I think, shows us the contrary. That being said, I'm a licensed real estate broker of 23 years with active licenses in the states of Virginia, North Carolina. I own a local business and also sit on Lynchburg Planning Commission as a disclosure. So, kind of jumping into a little boring, not to be tedious, but basic matter of rights, the taxing of residences, homes that people live in forever. Constitutional sections protecting private property outlined in the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments of the Constitution. Quoting from the Cato Institute, quote, "America's founders understood clearly that private property is the foundation..." that private property is the foundation of not only prosperity but of freedom itself. Thus, through the English common law, state law, and U.S. Constitution, they specifically protected property rights, the rights of people to freely acquire, use, and dispose of their own property." Okay. The underlying point of my comment is this. The basic right of private property has been gradually undermined by the inability of government to rein in their own spending. There's simply no incentive to rein it in. Where is it? The ownership of real property and the right to freely enjoy that property are basic rights that have been fundamentally redefined by the government. Then those rights are then leased and rented back to the citizens for a conditional use as the government sees fit through taxes and, say, strangulation, regulation. To put a finer point on it, so long as the government can tax its citizens' property and houses forever, that is, without any end or relief from those taxes, ever, under penalty of confiscation and sale of that property, the property and the rights that go with it are not truly owned by those citizens. They're not. Those rights are merely rented from the government. Real property ownership becomes a matter of little more than taxation semantics. The key point of inquiry for some of us, just to change gears a little bit, is that, to be frank, this is supposed to be a Republican city council. Some of you ran your campaigns on lowering taxes. Why is this tax proposal even being considered by this body? Why is there a possibility, no matter how remote, that this tax increase could even pass? Why are we having the discussion at all? Not to get on a rabbit trail, but some will say, okay, well, Virginia law requires us to assess these properties accurately. Well, that's impossible to do. You can't do it. You can't meet the law's requirement to assess individual properties. You'd need an army of appraisers to do that, and you can't do it. Nobody has that. So, they say, well, doing AI-powered-generated assessments of these properties is enough to meet the standard of the law. Okay, but that doesn't give us accurate valuations. And besides, everybody in this room knows that once these assessments go up, if there is ever a market correction, as many expect in the real estate industry, to bring the valuations of these properties down, those assessments are never going down, ever. So, in closing, I want to note that we've grown kind of inappropriately, in my view, accustomed to individuals campaigning on issues, and then, once elected, backtracking and refusing to support those issues. All we're asking is that if you campaigned on lowering our taxes, that you vote to lower our taxes and not raise them. Our local government must do what every family in the city has to do, and that's get its spending and budget priorities under control, and if necessary, perform audits or make hard choices. And that does not include simply demanding more money out of our pockets. No one needs or wants a higher mortgage payment, and certainly not thirty to thirty-five percent in more taxes without lowering the tax rate. We, the homeowners of Chestnut, Fort Hill, urge this city council to soundly reject this unfortunate and surprising tax increase proposal. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Greg Berry, followed by Stephen Jordan, then Jan Willinger, and Lisa Liston.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Deemer, and council members. Tonight, I'm speaking for myself, from Ward 3. And I wanted to address the tax rate. I have been a resident of Lynchburg for forty-nine years, and in the same home that whole time. The taxes I've paid over that forty-nine years is the equivalent to half the value of that home. Don't you think I've paid enough taxes? I am a retired law enforcement officer. I have bled and sweated for this city. I have paid the price. I am retired now. I do not have the additional income to keep paying higher taxes. This is ridiculous. Quit stealing from us. I don't mind paying my fair share. But when some people are doing nothing to support themselves, and they are looking to us to support them and their wants, not their needs, their wants, then that is wrong. You are elected to your position to protect our rights, not to steal from us. I do appreciate the job that most of you are doing. But the consideration that you need to have right now is for the citizens. We cannot keep taking and taking and taking and putting it into a bottomless pit. I don't mind paying taxes if I'm getting something in return for it. But this failed school system is just one example of the great failure of this city. That is why people don't want to come here. We need to correct that. I do appreciate what you do, but I do hope that you will stick to your guns and honestly address this issue for the people and refuse this tax hike. Thank you.
Next is Stephen Jordan, followed by Jan Willinger, then Lisa Liston, and Jeff Helbison.
Hello, city council. My name is Stephen Jordan. I live over in Fort Hill. I grew up here and born and raised here. I went to Sandusky Elementary as a child. I do own my home. I do not want higher taxes. I'm already paying enough with AEP, Columbia Gas. Everybody else keeps going up on their taxes, or their rates, I should say. And it, matter of fact, the same guy that bought next door to me, he bought the house the same time I did. He paid two oh five for his. I paid one twenty-three. Because he's in with the new thing like the gentleman back here said about, you know, everybody, the market, everything's way up and high and just crazy prices. So, I know a lot of people that have moved to the county because, like the gentleman just said, better schools, you know, there's more stuff. You can have a yard in your car and not have to worry about stuff being, you know, city getting a sticker on it or something. So, I would just offer that if you please keep the tax rate down, that would help me. I'm trying. I've got a business. I'm trying to keep up. I'd like to have a family someday. So, that's what I would ask from you guys. So, I appreciate y'all's time. Thank you.
Next is Jan Willinger, followed by Lisa Liston, Jeff Helbison, Andrea Hurt.
Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Deemer, city council members. My name is Jan Willinger, and I'm from Ward 1. And like every member on council, I'm a homeowner, a homeowner. My husband and I were fortunate enough to purchase him a home when we moved here over thirty years ago. We have also been very fortunate to enjoy an increasing value on our home most years. And although we won't fully realize the effect of those increases until we sell our home, it's a comfort to most homeowners to realize their nest egg grows each year as they live there. Do we expect to pay more in real estate tax because our home's value has increased? Of course we do. Is it fun? No. But it's not. But we're responsible citizens who realize that running a city takes hard work and a solid base of real estate revenue. As city leaders, you already know that over fifty percent of Lynchburgers don't own their home. These neighbors work hard to pay their ever-increasing rent each month. In fact, I would guess some of them aren't here tonight because they're out working their second job. So, what is city council proposing to do to help the other half of our citizens? I could add a pause here, but there's really no need because I've not seen any proposals from city council that's looking to support those who don't already have the privilege of owning a home. So, just like two years ago, city council wants to lower the real estate tax on those who are lucky enough to already own a home, even though that home has greatly increased in value over the last two years. Why is council so interested in only helping half of our citizens? We've got, you've got to know that folks are struggling to pay their increased rent, probably even more so than homeowners will struggle to pay an increased tax rate. In fact, as our neighbors pay their increasing monthly rent, their landlords make additional profits from paying reduced real estate taxes on those very same apartments. So, two years ago, we gave those real estate companies about a twenty percent extra profit margin by reducing their taxes, and now we're going to give them another fourteen percent. I asked the city managers whether they had any research on how much rents were reduced because of that. I've not heard of any rents being reduced. So, again, it's a great time to own a home in Lynchburg, and it's especially profitable time, to own large numbers of rental properties in Lynchburg. So, I'm here to ask you about the other forty thousand people who will get absolutely no benefit from this real estate tax cut that you want to input. They probably don't live in your neighborhoods, but they go to your schools, and they go to your grocery stores, and they are your constituents. They are equally as important, and they are struggling just as much as homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Lisa Liston, followed by Jeff Helbison, Andrea Hurt, then Jill Rufus.
I'm Lisa Liston. I live in Ward 1. And I'm just here flying by the seat of my pants because my real estate assessment increased thirty-five percent. And it's interesting to me that yours increased fifty percent, and I bet people about around this room have various and sundry increases. What the hell? I mean, why would it be different? That doesn't make sense to me. And while I agree somewhat with Jan that, you know, we got to take care of all the people. As a longtime resident here, as a retired person on a fixed income, I can tell you I cannot sustain a thirty-five percent tax increase on my home every two years. I'm willing to pay my share, and I'm willing to let the rate be the same. But I'm interested in the fact that there are all these new developments that are driving our assessments up. And it appears to me, from what little bit I gleaned before I came in here from the real estate people out there, that the new developments and new construction are not considered in this tax budget because they weren't here last year. And yet, we know they're coming. And it seems to me that the people coming in and buying new houses should perhaps have a higher tax rate because they anticipate that. When you come in and you buy a five-hundred-thousand-dollar house, then you anticipate your tax rate's going to be higher. And maybe instead of just having this simple, you know, we're going to tax everybody at seventy-six or eighty-nine, or perhaps we could come up with a plan that didn't penalize long-term residents because they've lived in their home and watched that value grow because they have maintained it and been a part of this community for many years. We could protect those people with a lower rate and charge new people coming in a higher rate. I don't know. That's just a thought. Also, I noticed in the budget that city staff was getting a three percent raise. How are they going to pay a thirty-five percent increase on their tax assessment? Like, the numbers don't add up, you know? Like, the rate of inflation is two and a half, three percent, just like the rate of the salary increase. But the tax increase is a lot higher. Doesn't make sense. The numbers should add up better, in my opinion.
Next is Jeff Helbison, followed by Andrea Hurt, Jill Rufus, then Carrie Bornstedt.
Well, good evening, council, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Vice Mayor. You know, I'm going to ask a few things. I know I only got three minutes. I'll try to be quick. Let's think for a minute. Why do you tax cigarettes so high? Because of the fact that you want to limit smoking, right? So, now, let's think about this recent proposed tax increase. Do you want properties to increase in value? If you do, you don't tax them so high. When you tax things high, you get less of them. When you tax things low, you get more of them. People are talking today about why did the assessments go up so much? They went up specifically, and I'll tell you why. Because several council members, a few years ago, when the city manager proposed raising the taxes to a dollar three, they had the backbone, they had the courage, they had the facts and convictions, and said, no, we're not raising the taxes because we care about the citizens of Lynchburg. We want more growth in the city of Lynchburg, and what has happened? Oh, my gosh, we got twenty percent increase in assessment. Why? Because you lowered that burden, you lowered the tax rate on those things, and allowed those taxes, or allowed the assessments to grow and to flourish. Now, if you don't want the city to grow, and you don't want the city to grow and flourish and people to have more wealth because their property values increase, vote to raise the taxes. If you want to have people to have growth and have their property values increase, lower the tax burden. What has happened is now you look around the city, and an ancillary effect is you drive around the city. For years, we looked at all the different blight around the city, right? You looked at houses being boarded up. You looked at stuff just thrown at the street corner. Do you see that anymore? You don't see that as much, not nearly as much. I drive around, I used to drive around and call them in every house for twenty years. Now, what's happened? People invested in those houses, fixed them up. They're now for sale. They're rehabbed. They're renovated. And my goodness, the reason these assessments went up so much is directly because of the policy that council set in lowering the tax rate before. Now, what happened a couple of years ago, you remember it. There was people out protesting because the experts said, oh, you need to raise the taxes to a dollar three. People protested outside for three different times, said, oh, if you lower it to eighty-nine cents, what's going to happen? The city's going to go bankrupt. You're not going to be able to fund this. You're not going to be able to do that. All of these things. What happened? The city thrived. The city is cleaner than it's ever been. Property values are increasing. We've got extra money in surplus. You've got money to do the things. You can't do everything. But you've got plenty of money to do the things you want to do. If you want the city to keep on growing, lower the taxes. If you want the city to quit growing, raise the taxes. I hope you set the tax equalization right and care about the city. Thank you.
Next is Andrea Hurt, followed by Jill Rufus, Carrie Bornstedt, and Steve Troxel.
Good evening. Andrea Hurt from Ward 2. Thank you all for what you do, and especially the new people here who must feel slammed by everything they're having to learn and digest. I've been in this city for around eight years, give or take. And one of the reasons I moved here, I was in the dubious honor of living in our nation's capital, the swamp, for over forty years. So, I've looked at a lot of waste, fraud, and abuse from there. I can smell it a mile away. I was up Rivermont the other day, and I saw very good pavement being ripped up and new pavement put down. I asked the guy, do you really think this road needed repaving? He said, no. I said, I'm on Washington Street, Mr. Wilder. And for eight years, I have tried to get that road paved. I have twisted my ankle on it, and still, nothing is happening. When I was on Rivermont and I saw that, and Ward 2 is particularly in bad repair for roads and infrastructure, that was it. That was kind of the last straw. I blew up. I said, this is it. I can't stand this anymore, the waste, fraud, and abuse. And with the tax rates the way they are, as Jeff so eloquently and other people have mentioned, we have, I hear nothing about efficiency of the government. I hear nothing about within the government how you can cut costs. I had started to do, during the election campaigns, I started to do some research on some very minor things. And what I found was shocking. Eight thousand dollars plus for those ugly-looking, solar-powered, compacting waste cans. Waste, waste, waste. I don't care where it came from. It's waste. We cannot afford that. We cannot afford fifty-million-dollar police departments, which apparently is too small and they don't have parking. We don't get safety from a building. We don't get education from spending huge amounts of money on a building. We get that from people, educating people. We got to start feeding the contractors, and whatever deals are being made, they're being made. They're an elite group in this town. I don't know them all, but I'm learning them. They're an elite group in this town, I don't know them all, but I'm learning them, who are getting money to be paid, a $10 million amphitheater. I have yet to meet a person who wants that amphitheater. $10 million smackers, and it's supposedly not even going to pay for itself. And yet, my road is in pieces. We need to lower the tax rate less than the equalization rate. People on fixed incomes cannot, I got my insurance bill for my home. It went up. How much can it go up? Everything. The water's going up. Everything is going up. Can't get blood from a stone. This is not what I moved here for. I do not want it to be Northern Virginia. I left that, and we're trying to make that. So I ask you to lower it lower than the equalization rate.
Next is Jill Rufus, followed by Carrie Bornstedt, Steve Troxel, then Michael Kalatian.
Hey, everyone. Thank you so much for listening to all of us tonight. My name is Jill Rufus, and we've, my husband and I have owned property in Lynchburg for 30-plus years. I wanted to talk to you about, we currently own 23 rental units in the Lynchburg area, and I wanted to say they're on Leesville Road, off Lakeside Drive, a number of them are downtown, Fort Hill, and on Memorial Avenue. So our experience with those is, the way we've got it set up, and we're just, just little landlords here, we have our son, he mows the lawns to keep the cost down. My husband will go and do a lot of the fixes so that we don't have a lot of costs going on there. We just try to keep things as, as close as we can so that we aren't dealing with these exorbitant costs. There, some of the rentals we have make us $75 a month, that's it. It's a very, very small slice. Others do differently, but just different landlords do things differently. But so, what I wanted to just kind of talk to you about is, in this increase of the taxes, I just looked today, 'cause I said, "Oh, what's this gonna mean for me? Like, how does this affect me?" So it's roughly $3,500 that would affect us of, of our taxes going up. So I just wanted to tell you what that means. We will just pass that on down to our renters. In some of our cases, we don't have, we don't have a buffer to handle that otherwise. So tonight, you guys get to decide for a lot of us that do have some rental properties that may operate on a smaller scale, is who's gonna take over those increases. So most of our renters are either college students or people in any kind of workforce housing, and so what we would be kind of doing is just passing that on to them. And so, I just wanted to talk to you about the trickle-down effect. I just wanted you to hear that from me. It doesn't necessarily affect me the same, it's going to go down to all of these renters. And I think a lot of the landlords that do slice their pie very close, as far as their costs, that's where it's gonna end up. So I just wanted to say thank you for listening to us. You guys get to make these decisions, and we just appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Next is Carrie Bornstedt, followed by Steve Troxel, Michael Kalatian, and Zach Melder.
Good evening, council members, and Mr. Taylor, Mayor Taylor. Thank you guys so much for giving me the opportunity to come up here and speak to you guys this evening. My name is Carrie Bornstedt, and my husband and I have lived in Lynchburg for about nine years now. We have a dermatology practice, we have two commercial properties for our practice, and we also have a residential property in the city of Lynchburg. We have a property in Windhurst and one on Langhorn Road, as well as our home is in Ward 4. I will say, just as a city resident, we are deeply invested in the sustainability of the city. We love the city, we fell in love with it. Our family practice thrives and does well here. However, it is tempting to move a mile down the road from Tradewind Drive over to Timberlake and save ourselves, our family, our kids, our future grandkids, just the tax burden of, you know, what we might anticipate paying over the next 20 to 30 years as our practice grows. So I'm here in favor tonight to ask that you equalize the tax with the assessment so that we don't end up with such an increased tax burden. As a medical practice, we actually cannot send the extra costs down to our patients because we rely 100% on re, insurance reimbursements and all the insurances, they decide what will be reimbursed. So that's a cost that we will take on ourselves, which, you know, if it's in the budget for Lynchburg to grow and be sustainable, then that's fine, but from what I'm hearing, there's a surplus. I don't know all the details about the surplus. I wish that I would've, would know more, but anyway, I just, I think of your time, I know this is probably hard diligent work to craft a budget for a city, but I just think, I hope that you'll consider, consider my stance as a business owner. Thank you very much.
Next is Steve Troxel, followed by Michael Kalatian, Zach Melder, and Joan Menj.
Steve Troxel, Ward 4, Fort Hill. I am not lucky enough to own my own home. Luck had nothing to do with it. I worked my butt off to pay for my home, to provide a place for my family to live. I focused on my home, on buying it, the American dream. We did it without an awful lot of other things so that I can make house payments, so that I can pay the taxes and the insurance and the upkeep and everything else. So I'm, I know there are people that don't own homes, but luck has nothing to do with it. If you own one, you know that for a fact. You know about these envelopes. I got mine about a month ago, and it had some interesting information in it. My house value went up $80,000, which surprised me because I didn't do anything. I just lived in it. My tax went up 31%, and I didn't do anything. Even with the equalization, it's gonna go up 13%. I'm 73, my wife is 73, we're both still working, 'cause we have to pay for this stupid stuff. Someday, I'd like to actually retire and not work. At the rate we're going, I'll have to move. I think Winter Bend is an able city manager. I compliment him on his work. He, like any other manager, tries to get as big a budget as he can. We would all do that. But he's also an able enough man that if you cut down the budget that he has proposed, even taking it below, I mean, mine's not gonna be equalized if you go to this .79 whatever it is. I'm still paying 13% more, but even if you take it below that, he's an able enough administrator that he can make the city run. We know what our priorities are. Public safety, police, fire, EMS. We know what our priorities are. We can focus on those. We don't have to do all this other stuff, and we don't have to pick on people like me and my wife, people who would like to actually retire someday in order to fund this, this stuff that doesn't have to be funded. We can do, the city's supposed to do the stuff that the city has to do. They don't have to do the stuff that people just, be nice if they could do it. So please take this down to the rate that we've got here, and I'd be real happy if you'd take it down so that my tax didn't go up at all. Thank you very much.
Next is Michael Kalatian, followed by Zach Melder, Joan Menj, then Ryan Thomas.
Hi, I'm Michael Kalatian. Mr. Mayor, honored to be here, council members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm a big-picture kind of guy. I'm not into all the statistics and the figures. I find it fascinating, and I'm thankful that people understand that way better than I do. But I do get the concept that elections have consequences, and I know that six of you are here because of conservative principles, and you're here because of Republican principles in their best form. And I do get the concept of authority and, and the scriptural and biblical concept of authority, and I know that the majority of you would say that you live by a golly and biblical principles and how you guide your life. So I would put forth the concept of the head right now and the authority that flows down from that. The, the current head that we are under is operating from a position of lower taxes, smaller government, and aggressively looking for ways to cut the fraud and the waste, which is abundant. So I'm almost like, why are we even having to do this discussion every two years when six of you live from that position? It should be very easy that we already, it's a, it's a done deal, that we're going to find ways to aggressively lower taxes if we can. And being very compassionate, too, we, we know that there are things that have to get done, and we all understand that, but I'm convinced that there are ways, if you looked hard, you would find, and, and some of, some have already alluded to that. There is enough waste, and there is enough unnecessary things that are here, that, that could be shifted to things that are necessary to help the schools, what they need, and things like that. So I, I, I just would implore you to operate under the authority, the mantle, the head that you all are now under that as fellow conservatives and Republicans, and to function from that, and you won't go wrong. In my last minute, I, 10 years ago, Mayor Taylor wasn't the mayor then, but he finished my basement and did an amazing job of doing that. My father moved in. In the process of doing that, an incredible blessing, he sold his home. He said, "Here, son, let's pay off your mortgage." So I haven't had a mortgage since then, but then I've been thinking about it, the concept of property tax, that you never really do get to own your home. You're still renting your home forever and forever and forever. I would, and I, and I'm, I'm all for paying taxes, render to Caesar what is justly due to Caesar, because we do wanna help, and we do understand we need to support our city in the functional, in services that are vital, but there should be a better way to do it, and we shouldn't be having to do this every two years, having to fight this battle, keep, to keep it from going up and hurting everybody. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Next is Zach Melder, followed by Joan Menj, Ryan Thomas, and Salvatore Petros.
Zach Melder, Ward 1. On a side note, I really do appreciate each and every one of you, just watching your guys' patience and graciousness as you listen to everyone from all the perspectives, so it is appreciated that you guys are doing this. But as we come to talk about taxes, I think we can all agree that at some point, taxes go from merely legalized taxes to theft by the government. As one of our greatest presidents said, Calvin Coolidge, for the record, "Collecting more taxes than is absolutely necessary is legalized robbery." The question then becomes, what is too many taxes? What constitutes theft? When it comes to paying taxes, the most cited verse in all of Scripture is Matthew 22:21, which is just cited, where Jesus, after pointing out that the image of Caesar's on the denarius, he says, "Render to Caesar the things that are Caesar, and to God the things that are God's." Since the denarius at the time would have the image of Caesar on it, the point is to pay Caesar his taxes. But what we often miss is the oversim, in this oversimplified interpretation is the last clause, "And render unto God the things that are God's." Jesus' point was to contrast the image of Caesar and the image of God. While Caesar had his image on the denarius, give it to him. But God's image is on every human being, because every human is made in His image. This means that because we are all made in His image, our whole lives are to be given back to God as a living sacrifice. As this particularly applies to taxes and to Caesar, this means that Caesar is to make just tax policy. However, justice and tax policy hardly ever go together. When the government taxes, the question they ask is, "How much do we need?" But the question Jesus gives us is, "What is a just tax policy that will glorify God?" As we come to real estate taxes, I would postulate that is the most wicked form of tax policy a government can levy against its citizens. By taxing private property, our, which is our houses that we have purchased, the government is claiming an inherent right over our property. The government is saying to the citizens, "If you're gonna buy a house, you not only have to pay taxes when you buy it, but subsequently every year to keep owning it." This destroys ownership and makes everyone a tenant of the state. After all, we really can't say we own it if we have to keep paying for it. In reality, we pay a lot of money so that we can merely rent from the city. I can go on. I've talked to a bunch of people who've actually owned their house for many years, you've already heard them. It's ridiculous, though, that many people are thinking about moving to the county merely for cheaper real estate taxes. It's a regressive tax, it's an aid to gentrification, it discourages investments. Ultimately, man was not created by the state, nor are they sustained by the state, nor are they saved by the state. This is because the state is not God. It is God who gives man stewardship over his property and not government. It is God who grants people the right to private property and not government. There is nothing good about real estate taxes. They're unjust. Lower our taxes, please.
Next is Joan Menj, followed by Ryan Thomas, Salvatore Petros, and Rebecca Taylor.
I'm Joan Menj, and I wanna thank each and every one of you, council, and all that you bring in your combined knowledge. I am a single woman. I've been a widow for many, many years. I own my own home in Ward 1, and with the cost of living rising so much, it is very difficult for me to have an increased interest, or not interest, amount of, what is it, 89 cents hike, and I would prefer to see it go back to 76 cents, whatever, because I don't see how it is really going to affect our living here in Lynchburg by raising the rates. So I would like to see it go back to 76 cents if we can, and not endure a higher tax rate. That's it. A lot of people have gone ahead of me that have far more knowledge than I do, but I just, I know how it affects me. It's not good. And I don't see what I'm benefiting by, or the people of Lynchburg are benefiting by this hike. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Next is Ryan Thomas, followed by Salvatore Petros, Rebecca Taylor, and Harold Hale.
Ryan Thomas, Ward 2. City council, I wanna thank you guys so much for listening to us, yell at you guys for the next few hours. I want to specifically address the effective real estate tax increase entailed in this budget from a more ideological perspective, as I think it's helpful to frame this discussion in terms of what taxation actually is at its core. Taxation that occurs anywhere except at the point of consumption is the forceful taking of wealth by the state, with certain services being promised in return. If I fail to pay my real estate taxes, the city takes my home. If I resist, the city sends men with guns to ensure compliance. Thus, ultimately, taxation is the leveraging of violence by the state to compel citizens to surrender a portion of their wealth to the state. There's no sugarcoating that. It's what taxation is when it occurs anywhere except the point of consumption, because, to clarify, taxes at the point of consumption are technically voluntary. I can choose not to buy a new Mercedes, therefore, I ultimately choose to pay the sales tax. That's voluntary. However, I can't choose not to have shelter. I can't choose not to have a job. Thus, I have no choice but to pay the taxes associated with owning a home or working to support my family. I either pay them, or ultimately, I will have violence visited upon me. It's a funny thing to see the same people who rally for non-violence on the steps of Monument Terrace step into this room and advocate for higher taxes and evermore government imposition on the lives of citizens who have already endured four years of record inflation. Violence is still violence, even if you outsource it to someone else. So let's talk numbers. Just a year and a half ago, my house payment was $739. Due to four years of soaring inflation, that number has gone up to $877. That's a 17% increase. The new assessments increase the tax burden on me and my family another $307, which makes my new monthly payment 902. From $739 to 902 in a year and a half, that's a massive financial shock, and my situation is right in the middle of that bell curve and is indicative of broader trends. In a perfect world, real estate and other non-consumption-based taxes wouldn't exist. I recognize that right now, that's an unrealistic goal. However, it's not unrealistic to at least beg for some small measure of relief. I suspect there are many in this room who will argue something along the lines of, "I'm happy to pay increased taxes if it provides..." Fill in the blank. Good for you, but I find this to be a very unempathetic position. You may be able to absorb the costs, many of us cannot equalize the tax rate. Thank you.
Next is Salvatore Petros, followed by Rebecca Taylor, then Harold Hale. Looking for Salvatore Petros? Okay. Next is Rebecca Taylor, followed by Harold Hale.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Taylor. I live in Ward 1. I live in Ward 1. I've been in Lynchburg for 20 years now. I went to Liberty, I did undergrad and masters, and then have stuck around. I've owned a home now for 12 years. I am also an investor here. I'm a Realtor, and I love Lynchburg. Over the years, I have seen our property taxes increase, and like many have said, and especially Jill Rufus, I cannot sustain that cost increase. My margins are fairly small, and I try really hard not to raise rents on my tenants every year. I realize for many of them, money is very tight. It is for us too. Everything has gone up, as most of the folks in this room have said, and you know. So, I try very hard to not raise rents on my tenants, but I have to. When we see these kind of increases, somebody has to eat the cost, and when I have no margins to do it, I have to have some money for repairs so my buildings are not slumware buildings. That money is passed on to my residents, my tenants. And so, as others have shared, this does not just impact those that own homes, this also impacts those that do not own homes. And so, we are passionate about investing here, but because of the increases over the years, we are moving elsewhere. We have property in Myrtle Beach right now, 95 units that we're working to acquire, because it just makes more sense to move outside of the city. Personally, we're looking to buy outside of the city and move because of the increases. And so, I don't want to see that happen for our city. I want to stay here. I love the city. I love what's happening here. My kids go to public school here. I want to invest in that, but we also have to be mindful of our residents, and what we're all experiencing right now is increased cost in every area. So, please, please be mindful of the fact that we are all hurting. Whether we have property or not, it impacts every single person in this room. So, please consider lowering the tax rate, really thinking through this assessed value. That 30%, 40%, 50%, that is, that's not okay. That's ridiculous. And so, please, think through these statistics that are being thrown out at us. I look at a lot of property around the United States, and that kind of increase in assessment is not, is just not sustainable, and it's not what we're seeing across the country and other markets. I know that real estate's been very, very, very busy the last couple of years, but it's also slowed down, and it's hard for people to buy houses. Interest rates are sky high, and so, a lot of folks out there have a dream of owning a home, but they can't. And when you have taxes at this rate, it's even more impossible for them to go and buy a home. So, thank you for all that you do. I'm sorry that you're getting a lot of pushback tonight, but I just hope that you'll consider what we, as a people, and people of your city, really care about and need. So, thank you.
Last on our list is Harold Hale. Oh, okay. Mr. Hale is foregoing. That exhausts our list. Mr. Mayor?
Is there anyone who did not sign up wanting to speak? Yes?
She signed up.
Who signed up? Give them the opportunity to hear.
Good evening to each and one up there. I have heard two different things, to lower the tax or to raise the tax. I am here to tell you, raise the tax. When you're gonna need a Amalans, you make it a letter next week from the city. We will not be picking up trash anymore, because we don't have money to pay the people that pick your trash up. We may need a Amalans, and you may not get it, because the Amalans is sitting there, but there's no drivers, because they don't have nothing to pay them with. Raise the tax. Everybody lived in a different neighborhood, and everybody's taxes have gone up. Now, if you want to live like a king or queen, that's fine. My taxes went up too. I've been living where I'm living over 60-some years. That's right. And I'm 91 years old. And anyhow, if you don't pay taxes, you won't get a dime or anything. People got garbage out. The man come around. Plus, the man have to come around to read to meter. He's not working for anything. He looking for a paycheck to come out and read to meter. When the water line break, you call the city to come out and fix it. You know, you may not get it fixed, because there are nobody getting paid to fix it. You claim that you don't have money to do this and money to do that. I learned many, many years ago, I'm 91 years old, I ain't never made no money. I made change. And I had to see how I was going to do with that change. That's right. I sent three children to college, because I told them that they was going. We didn't have a dime. And the way that we got that to go to college, you had to get your work in school. You trying to damn the teachers. The teachers is everything. Once you leave your child at school, they claim parents know best. But once they go over that door seal, you don't see that child no more till school is over. The teacher is, the nurse, the babysitter, got to teach your child how to read and write, or whatever they got to do. And I'm telling you today, raise the taxes.
Mr. Mayor, as our next speaker makes her way to the podium, I just want to reiterate, this is the Public Hearing for Real Property Tax Rate. We still have a public hearing on water and budget, so if you did sign up for one of those, your name will be on that list. This is just for the real estate.
Some of you already know who I am. My name is Risa Hayes. I live in Ward 1. I want to talk about this in the background of someone who did not grow up with resources. I was homeschooled, not because my family wanted to homeschool me, but because there were no schools in the area we were in. I was homeless when I was in first grade for over eight months. I have experienced hardships that other people like to judge. They like to see a family, or even a person in a tent, and they think that they're lazy. I lost a job in January that paid me $25 an hour, so now my husband and I do not have that income. I own my house, and I know someone here said that that wasn't luck. It was luck. The time I purchased my house was, my house was worth $60,000. It is now worth double. I will tell you, with all of the financial troubles I have experienced, and all of the problems in my childhood, and all of the increases in groceries and everything, I still stand by raising these taxes. I know it will be difficult for me and my husband. My husband works overtime every single week, because I do not have an income. It's hard. I know everyone here wants to be able to afford nice things, but here are things that I was able to do as a homeless child. We could go to the community pool. We could go to the library. We had options that left us so that we could have some semblance of being a human being still, despite the fact that we never invited friends over. There was nothing to invite friends over to. So, you can sit here and talk about, "Oh, my money," and this and that and that. What does the community get when you cut these taxes? What happens to the children who do not have parents with money that can get a YMCA membership to go to that pool? Where are they going in the summer? People complain about teenagers being bored and causing trouble all the time. Where do you want them to go? If the library falls apart, who's gonna have access to books? Barnes &amp; Noble is expensive. You're not gonna get books from there. So, when you cut these taxes, you aren't just saving money for some people, you're destroying families more than you think. These amenities mean so much to a family that cannot afford groceries. Now, I have been in a situation where I could not afford to eat three meals a day, and that was here in Lynchburg, when I was going to college at Liberty University. I can tell you that I lost so much weight from so little food, and I would still be in that position if it meant the rest of the community had options. So, we can sit here and say, "My money, my money, my money," but what about my community? And supposed Christians are gonna sit here and say that they choose money over community? That's what it comes down to. So, what it is, do you care about money or community?
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Megan Hoffman. I'm a Ward 1 resident. I have my girls here today. We represent RS Payne and Lincoln Middle School, which are schools that my students' children go to. I don't, I often prepare my notes and speak about my children in my notes, but they wanted to come tonight, and they wanted to kind of hear and hold witness to what we're talking about, and I appreciate that and their support. I don't really care how we reach, reach the tax rate that we need, but we need to fund the services that our city has. We are, we start with a point of gratitude. We moved here because we wanted a functional city that had amenities that we could enjoy as a family. We are passionate public school parents. We are involved as we can be. We go to the library every Monday and use those, use the books and the resources. We use the public parks all the time. I can't wait for the amphitheater. I'm so excited about the amphitheater. We're gonna use the playground downtown. We walk the downtown streets. We support Downtown Lynchburg Association. We want to be residents that are giving back to our community and investing deeply in our community. And I ask that the city council approves a budget that allows us to do so and allows the city to continue to thrive. The cuts are not going to allow for that, and we, you know, I, ever since the 89 cent change, I spend so much of my time trying to make up the gap as chairing the PTO Connect for the city schools. We are working so hard to be able to pay for Girls on the Run after school, to be able to, you know, be able to send kids on field trips, to be able to put shoes and coats in the closets where the children don't have them. There's so much support in the classroom that has gone away. We see it every day, because we're in those classrooms, and you all have visited those schools. You know, I know, Council of Missions, you've been looking at the infrastructure. You know there's the leaks. You know that, you know that the infrastructure in the building is not, is not sustainable. The same for the library. We just ask and we implore you to create a tax rate that allows us to continue to thrive as a constituency, and to continue to have a community that we're proud of and that we can take part in. I don't, you know, I don't care how you get there, but the continuing to reduce and cut is only gonna hurt all of us and particularly our kids. So, we just ask that you look seriously at the ways that, that you can, and I, we're fine paying more than our share, and I, I think that is a very empathetic response. And that's gonna, that's gonna be what I want to model for these girls, and what I hope that we all will model, that we will lean in and serve and give and support one another so that we can have a thriving and supportive community. Thank you.
Kimberly Dyckarsley, Ward 2. I agree with some of what she said about finding a way to get there and meet in the middle, figure out something, services, et cetera. I wanted to ask a question. I know you can't answer, but the room can hear the question too, and the Facebook crowd, wherever they are. What if, wait, let me go back. When I go into local stores, if their floor is messy, or dirty, or parking lot isn't quite up to par, their prices go up, but the quality stays the same or decreases, I just stop going, if I can afford to. What if that tax goes up so high that people decide to issue an economic response to withhold their discretionary spending on the sales and use tax, on the meals tax, on the lodging tax, you know, kind of create a ghost town for the months where the money needs to be up the most? What if that happened in response? If the withholding of consumer-based taxes happened in response? What would happen? There has to be other revenue alternatives. I would think about that. Don't go too low, don't go too high, but there has to be a meeting in the middle, because some people in this city think they rule the budget, and they don't. A lot of people can't be here. A lot of people, it's not that they're doing nothing, because if his story is accurate, there were a lot of do-nothings that profited as well. But a lot of people can't be here because they have a second job, or they caregiver for elderly person, or they're having their children, they can't make it. So, I'm just saying what a lot of people asked about. What if the other taxes were withheld for months at a time until the attention is gotten of the decision-makers?
Thank you for being here tonight and listening to us. I appreciate that. My name is David Wickline, Ward 1. I'm 75 years old. I've owned my home since 1990. I put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears and money into it fixing it up from top to bottom, inside and out. I can no longer afford to pay the taxes. I'm on a fixed income. What I'm hearing tonight, and I don't want to dwell just on myself, because surely there are a lot of other people here, elderly people, that are no longer able to pay or will not be able to pay these increases in taxes, real estate taxes. My tax assessment went up 100%. My percent of tax amount, percent change, went up 75%. I can't afford that. I know this tax relief measures, but again, there've got to be a lot of people out there that are elderly, older than me, or they're coming right behind me. If this goes on and on and on, what are we gonna do? There's an old saying, "If you keep on doing what you've always done, you'll keep on getting what you've always had." There's got to be a better way. In this day and age, when our culture and society are coming together in loggerheads, it's clear to me, we gotta learn to do things differently. We gotta think innovatively and creatively. That's the watchword I hear when I listen to the larger issues that are going on in our country and here tonight. Innovation, innovation, innovation. Creation, creation, creation. Think outside of the box. There's gotta be a better way to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, for hearing us tonight. Thank you for the hard work you're doing. Appreciate it. I just represent those who are on, oh, Sarah Clayfie in Ward 1. We do represent everyone, not just ourselves, and we are compassionate, and a lot of people moved to this area because it was a great place to live, and that drove up the prices of our homes. Talked to people from California. They say that they pay the same amount in taxes here that they did in California if you add it all up. So, I just would love for us to figure out a way to make this the place they thought they moved to and keep it the way it was, and thank you for your hard work. And I agree, we want to meet all the needs. We don't want to defund anything. That's not the goal. What we're asking is to reexamine the budget, and I know that's not really y'all's job. So, asking our city employees to please look at the budget again and see if there's anything that they can cut that isn't the public school and the library and the pool. Or maybe we can get a cheaper rate on some of the repairs. And then, a friend of mine suggested that people who want to give outside of their taxes could have their name on, you know, you could, you could have donations for the pool. That would be a lovely thing. And then it'll be tax-free money that we give. Yay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Jen Staten, Ward 1. I did not prepare what I was going to write, but I'm pretty much gonna say the same thing I've said the last, I don't know... thing I've said the last, I don't know, three or four times. We've done this same back, back and forth. Every time we have said, go ahead, raise our taxes. We believe in our public schools. We believe in our public libraries, our parks, our infrastructure, our fast response time from our first responders. My husband and I moved to Lynchburg 24 years ago now. We had free land to build on in Amherst County with a beautiful view. Our parents are all out there. We were, we were raised out there and we chose to move to Lynchburg because of the great public schools. We wanted our kids to have the opportunity to walk to school rather than ride 45 minutes on a school bus. We wanted the fast response times. My parents at that time laughed at us a little. They told us we were going to hate those high taxes of the city and we haven't. But what we do hate is the response time that they have now that they are elderly in the county and we are begging them to move across the bridge with us to the city so we don't have to worry about those ridiculous response times. That's what we want, that's why we want our real estate taxes high. We want that security. We want to know that when our kids go to high schools like mine did, that they have more AP class offerings than the county schools. Because we understand that when they transfer those classes to college, that saves us money then. We realize this is an ongoing investment. I am a proud supporter of the amphitheater. I understand that when we build things downtown, that eventually is going to bring more revenue into the city. It's going to bring in more meal tax, more entertainment tax from the counties. And they're not choosing to invest in those things and we are. And that's what makes Lynchburg special. That's why people like us choose to live here. It's not because of the views or because we can have a bigger yard. None of those things are true out here. But by living in the city, we know that we're getting those AP classes, that fast response time, amazing trails, amazing nonprofit partners in our community that our kids get, you know, access to because of partnerships that our city staff has worked so hard over the years to develop. And all of those things are what makes Lynchburg special and we are happy to pay a little bit more, I mean, not happy, nobody's happy to pay more taxes, but we understand that that's our investment. And it's really, at the end of the day, not, even though it's a large amount, it's not so much that it's making us where we can't afford our house. And I feel like that's an exaggeration when people are looking at that. I might be wrong. I'm not in their shoes. But I, a lot of people for a lot of years have sat here and said that they're going to move to the county and yet they're still here, even when we've had the tax increases. And so, and people keep moving to Lynchburg and I'm, just want to encourage that. We want to keep our investment steady. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Chris Quigg and I live in Ward three for about the last 18 years. Before that, my wife and children and I, we lived in New England where property taxes are significantly higher. Why is that? Is local government trying to do more than their job up there? I believe so. The New England Patriots motto is do your job and it's worked well for them. They've won a number of championships. The New England local governments would rightly do well to get back to that motto. Citizens are leaving those states and I think a main reason is because of high taxes. So I want to encourage you, our local government leaders, to simply do your job. Public safety, this is already mentioned before, but police fire, EMS, roads, water, sewer, waste and education in cooperation with the state. This is your job and trust us, the citizens, to do our job. Even things like library renovations. Like for example, when I was a kid and my public school needed a renovation, the school community came together and we raised money through a paper drive and, and we completed the renovation. Another time, we had a chili cook-off to raise money. So the community did not go to the local government for money. They creatively did their job. So don't raise taxes and try to do more than your job. No. Equalize the tax rate. Keep taxes low. Keep Lynchburg a desirable place to live. Keep conservative values in your thinking and your behavior like a generation ago. Let's learn from the mistakes of the New England states that are overtaxing their citizens and trying to do too much. When you start overtaxing your citizens, they start moving away or even dumping tea. So trust us, the citizens of Lynchburg, to step up and do our job and thank you for all you do. Appreciate it.
Good evening. Karen Quigg, Ward three. Thank you for all you do. You've got a lot on your plate and we are praying for you. So as my husband just said, we moved from New England. We've been to the Boston Harbor. It's a unique privilege now to speak on the same subject the American colonists did in 1773. Of course, they didn't just speak, they acted. There's no harbor here, but we do have the James River. The colonists were frustrated and angry at England for imposing yet again another tax increase on their goods. And I too, as a citizen of Lynchburg City, am frustrated and angry that all of you might not help us out, the ones who voted you in. Are property taxes just an unfair tactic dating all the way back to the Middle East? I don't know. But I have a suggestion. Let's be courageous and abolish them altogether. Increase the sale tax instead for the services that our city needs. Just a thought. But as reported, I ask you, is there $15 million in unexplained cash from last year's fiscal year? Is there a projected $10 million for this fiscal year? If so, where is it and who is in charge of this money? One of the most important lessons, quote, from our founding fathers, understood that the nature of power itself, that when unchecked can easily become corrupt. And the founding mothers emphasize that power comes with a moral obligation. We taxpayers want to know the truth. We want a detailed audit and we expect you all to do your job and do the right thing. Equalize our tax rate. If the surplus monies are to, quote, "fund the important initiatives in our community", what could be a more important initiative than lowering the tax burden for the citizens of your city? Why would you not want to help your citizens avoid a tax increase? And so then, what if us taxpayers come together as a community and work together because now we have extra money in our pocket and we were there to fix the library, feed the poor and clean the parks ourselves, et cetera, et cetera? Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Mario Calibretta, Ward one. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Thank you for hearing us out. I'd like to correct the record. I was called a king today. There are kings and queens apparently in this room and that's just not the case. My last name is Calibretta. That comes from an Italian province in Italy called Calabria. It's the poorest part of Italy. My family came to this country to get away from the economic constraints they had. They both have fourth grade educations. They put me through school. I went to college. I'm a civil engineer now. And we moved to Lynchburg eight years ago. We got a six-month lease because we weren't sure if we liked this place. We weren't sure if we were going to stay. Well, we stayed and we bought a property, renovated it. I spent two years working on that property, creating four single-bedroom units that are now an amenity to the city and to the tenants here, to the residents here as tenants. Two years, two in the morning, three in the morning nights. I didn't ask the city for help. I didn't ask for any handouts. I worked and I worked because my parents taught me that. Both of them, again, fourth grade educations. And while of course, we enjoy public transportation and all these other things, you know what I learned from my mother who would walk home instead of taking the bus to save 75 cents? That it's more important to work. And what we're asking is relief. Our, we own two homes, one that we live in and again, this rental property that I, I worked on. It was empty for two years before I showed up and I put my work into that. And we are again, adding an amenity for the, the city and for tenant, and for residents who come here. We will simply pass on any sort of rent increase or any sort of tax increase to our tenants. We have no choice because I am not a king. I don't know if there are kings here, but a woman earlier said, kings and queens. I'm sorry, I, I take offense at that. I come from a poor part of Italy. I was born there. I'm an immigrant. I came here when I was four years old. And I am what I am because of what America provides and what it does provide is opportunity and we worked hard to do that. You cannot simply take our hard work simply because you decide that you need it for something else that you think maybe is better. You're elected because we are, we have elected you. And there's a completely different makeup here than when we moved here six years ago or almost eight years ago. And we expect that, that the will of the people, our will, is considered. Again, I, I take offense at being called a king. I come from the poorest part of Italy and as an immigrant, I worked very, very hard and I learned something very, very important from my parents. And I, I will, I will tell them that they have a king now for a son, I guess, because some people, some people think that that's the case and it, and it isn't. So please consider what you're doing. It matters.
Hi, my name is Dante Calibretta, Ward two. I've lived in Lynchburg for eight years and I'm new to homeownership. Buying a house with the skyrocketing prices the past few years is already hard enough for people in my age group with the cost of living going up as well, dealing with inflation. We need to be able to stay afloat instead of dealing with continually rising costs across the board. We shouldn't be making it more difficult for people to be homeowners or even renters. This is a bipartisan issue, but it is particularly frustrating that despite having a conservative-leaning council, this policy is being pushed. You represent the city and the people that voted for you. Your job is to represent those ideas and not to have your own rogue agendas. The majority of this city did not vote for a higher cost of living and a higher tax burden. Other people talking about being happy to have these taxes is an extremely privileged position to hold. There are better ways to achieve those goals than to tax people for having a home. Do the right thing and lower the tax rate. Thank you.
My name is David Ray Bovin, Ray Bovin's son. I've lived in Lynchburg for 35 years in the same house with my aging parents who then passed away. And I have been the executor and also the power of attorney for my mother since my dad passed away in 2017. And I was the executor for my mother when she passed away in 2023. So I keep good records of my taxes on the house that I now live in. And you know, there's some interesting things. I've done my homework and I've seen that the value of my house was pretty stable around $150,000. That's the house and the property. Until 2021, when I got a notice that the value of house and property was overinflated, which I then called for a city, you know, accessor to come over to my house who straightened out the problem and brought it back down to about what it was before. Well, that wasn't too bad until I got over to 2023, when suddenly the value of this house shot up from $157,000 to $186,500. And that lasted into 2024 until '25, when the value shot up a staggering $251,600. Well, the thing is, I don't mind paying the taxes. You know, that's, that's not what worries me. What is worrying me is this overinflating the value of my house, you know, and property, possibly artificially by some of your land-grabbing lobbyists who are anxious to buy my house and take it from me. And the thing is, I plan to stay in that house as long as I live. And I don't like to see this, you know, overinflation, you know, you know, world double in four to five years, each four to five years it doubles more and more until it finally bursts and we run into a depression and stuff. I've seen too many homeless people out there living in boxes. I don't want to be one of them.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Josh Eager. I live in Ward one. I bought my home there two years ago. I want to see the tax rate increased. I want the 89 cents. I want to see the schools fully funded. I want to see the library fully funded and maintained. I want to see the services in the city increase because that's why I moved here. I moved here for the services. This is a simple case of supply and demand. We have a lot of people moving here. For Ametums, hiring 500 more people, that's who I work for. And we all want to buy houses. I want to buy a house. That's part of the reason why I moved to Lynchburg was because I was able to buy a house here. The reason I was able to buy a house here is because house prices are cheap. If we build more houses here in Lynchburg, then the houses will stay cheap. And me, my friends and other people in this community will be able to buy houses. The rate of homeownership will increase. A lot of people here tonight are complaining about the price of their houses or the value of their houses increasing. The way we keep that low is by building more houses. If more people move here, more people want to buy houses, they're just, they're going to increase the value of your house. So we need to build more houses. In order to do that, we need to improve the services of Lynchburg. We need to build more sewer pipes. We need to build more water mains. We need to build bigger roads to handle the traffic. We need to improve the schools to keep more people moving here. I think about as I grow older, as I get married and have kids, I want to send them to good schools. Those good schools do not get paid for if the tax rate decreases. So please, tax me. Make the schools here good so I want to stay. Thank you.
Hi, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilwoman, Councilmen. My name is Catherine Golden. I'm from Ward four. I would like to represent the renters. I want to thank you for the privilege of speaking in front of you. And I also thank you for the decrease in the taxes in '22 and '23, or '23, '24. I'm requesting to lower and keep the taxes lower. I rent in Ward four. I began, I began a lease there in May of '22. My rent went up the following year $75. The following year after that, it went up $50. The following year after that, it went up 65. Water charges increased. Now, I am a recipient of the real, the owners of the rent, so I'm renting, so they're passing this cost down to me. I am a single individual. I've been a single individual since 2007. I have, in this city, been able to pay my rent and, and do well. But at this point now, it's gotten to the point where it is not feasible. I'm considering getting a roommate or considering other, other resources. But I say that the taxpayers' monies, those are our money that you represent and I want to ask you for excellence. I ask you to pull up your shirt sleeves. I ask you to dig deep and to find out whether it's easy to tax again. It's easy to look for money. I ask you to look for where the fatness is in it and I ask you to slim the budgets. I ask you and I request of you to dig deep. So I want to thank you and to pay in, in for your time and attention in this.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank each and, each and every one of you all for the services that you have.
I'd like to thank each and every one of you all for the services that you all have provided to this city, you know, over your tenure on council, no matter how short it should be. Okay, I don't want to be... Oh, excuse me. My name is Reggie Williams. I'm a resident of Ward Four in Lynchburg. I don't want to be redundant or reiterate everything that has been said so far. But we can see the economic mess that this country is in now and the way it's going to trickle downhill and hit us. So I'm saying that to say that, hey, you know, Mr. Wilder asked a question on the 5:00 news tonight. What are we willing to give up? Okay, my answer to that, for me, would be absolutely nothing, except maybe that water fountain out there in the middle of the river using our power, you know, for nothing. Yeah, I'm willing to give that up. And the amphitheater, you know, was mentioned too. While it will provide cultural events, enlightening events, and learning events, you know, that price tag of $10 million, I think we could have done a little shaving there, you know, as my councilman, Faraldi, said on the 6:00 news, when he said, yes, we have these problems. We've got these trials and tribulations to face, but, you know, the money we do have can't be better spent. You know, we need to get the purchasing people that are working for the city to, you know, more or less do some, you know, analysis on, you know, competitive bidding. And we also, you know, need to, you know, more or less just take a deeper look at, you know, how things can be spent. Use what we have to get what we got, you know? It's that simple to me. So anyway, you know, without reiterating everything that has been said before, and then, oh, one last thing, you know, I think a lot more community involvement. You know, I've been a community activist in this community, you know, before most of you all were even born. Yes. And, you know, we need to get out there and talk to people, see what people's needs are, see what's important to them, what's not important. Thank you.
Well, thank you for having me come and speak before you. This is my first time I've ever been to one of these things. So I, my name is Katrina Ing, and I live in Ward Two. I moved here eight years ago as well. I find that the reason why I moved here was economically feasible. When I moved here, I wasn't able to find a job at age 60. It took a long time for me to get a job here, and the most I could make was $9 an hour. That was more than, I mean, that was as much as I was making when I was in high school. And I had to take two full-time jobs just to stay here. What I do is I work hard. I'm a hard worker, and most people that I know do know that. So what money I have, I need to try to conserve, and I do it well. And a lot of people can't believe how much I can conserve. And I think that's what government's about, is conserving our money. Those people that have the money, that's great to have it. But then are you willing to volunteer and help the community out there? And use your money to work instead of taxing people and making people move out of their homes because they can't afford it? Are you willing to go out and help the people around here? You have, you can volunteer, you can also pay donations, you can do a lot of different things besides raising taxes. Raising prices doesn't make anything better. It doesn't make it, it doesn't make it that you can have, you can go out and volunteer and be with the teachers and donate to those teachers that are needing help. And we have homeschoolers that are out there too. I don't think that everything is always about increasing. I think it's about learning to take your, what you have, and learn to live within your means, and how do you budget those dollars to fit the needs of the people. And those that have more than what they need, I think that they need to then want to, if they want taxes raised, go out and take that money and donate it. Use it for the good. You can go out there and pay for the donations for the pool, if you want a pool, if you want the, whatever it is, I don't care, the skating thing or whatever there is. You can take your money and donate it to that. I think you need to be, as a free people, to use your money as you will, not as being forced to have to pay because you want to have certain privileges that other people may not even use. And they don't want to pay for that because they're not using it. So I think to be equal to everybody, I think you have the right to use your money as you will, and I think that we need to look at how we spend our money and how to use that money for the good of all. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm David Ream. I live in Ward Three, and I've had the privilege of, living in Lynchburg, I think I get, I have spoken or written to each one of you individually. I've walked and prayed with many of you. We have, we have lived life together, and I've lived in cities in different places where I was not even a face in the crowd. I was faceless in a sea of people and not represented at all. And I believe that that's not the case here, and that's one of the reasons why I love this city. Unfortunately, and it doesn't matter what side of the political aisle you're on, if your property keeps going up and you don't pay your taxes, whenever you think you hold this idea that you own your home, you don't own your home. Okay? Try, try not paying your taxes for five years. I don't care if you're Republican or Democrat or Independent or Libertarian or Communist. I did, it makes no difference. Try not paying your taxes for five years, okay? And you'll see who owns your home, and it ain't you. And what scares me, as I'm a little older and my income is not keeping pace with these reassessed values, that I'm afraid I'm not going to be able to work on Maggie's Farm no more. And, and I'm telling you, I don't want to move, but I am seriously looking at, I'm selling my home and moving or refinancing my home and buying outside of Campbell County and renting my home so that I can at least be close to Lynchburg. I love this place, and I really don't want to have to leave. But I ain't going to work on Maggie's Farm no more, okay? I can't, I cannot make this happen, okay? And I just need you to stop with the assessments. I know it's a state law that you have to reassess the property every two years, but you have to understand that our economy has inflated the prices by printing up more and more money, so the values have gone up. And so the value of our assessments is not actual real value, it's an inflated value. And so you've just got to do something to help me be able to stay here and enjoy life in Lynchburg. And I think there's a lot of people who love this town, and there's a lot of people who love one another. And I do believe that there is a whole lot more cooperation, although a lot of people in social media and public media would love to have us all go, you know, this is bad and this is bad, and we get opposite sides and then want to fight one another because it makes good TV and self-advertising. But that's not the case for most people. Keep our prices down so we can stay here, please. Thank you.
Yes, it's Mayor. I have 13 voicemails. It's important to note that they will be subject to the time limitations as well, so we'll run the clock. The first one is from David Turner.
David Turner, I live in Richmond Hills subdivision of Temple Lake Road. Would like to speak about the property reevaluation and the consideration of helping with property tax and the evaluation and the tax at, instead of 89 cents per hundred, of 79.5. Thank you very much. My number is 25233.
I'll pause it there. The next is from Pat O'Hara.
Good afternoon. My name is Pat O'Hara. I am a Lynchburg resident. My wife and I are public educators in the area, specifically, she's at Sandusky Middle School. But the reason I'm leaving a voice message is because I've looked into the surplus that we've had for the 2024 and 2023 fiscal years and noticed that in lieu of this, with property values also increasing, that keeping the, like, tax rate where it is would allow for a lot more money to be invested in our parks program, in our school programs, our library program. And I don't think the taxes should be reduced. I think they should stay at the current rate to allow the city to gain more money to really invest back in the community, especially when we've been seeing a lot of educators leaving the area because they're not, they haven't been getting consistent pay raises. And yeah, if you have any questions for me, you can call me at 48.
Can't stop it there. The next is from James Jones.
Hello, I'm calling about the council meeting that is going to be held on April 22nd, and I'm calling about item number 1 dot 1, which is the Real Property Tax Rate Public Hearing. I oppose the city manager's proposed tax increase. My name is James Jones, and my address is 508 Lady Slipper Lane, Lynchburg, Virginia, 24502. Again, I strongly oppose the city manager's proposed tax increase. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
The next is from Dennis Toothman.
This is Dennis Toothman. I live at 1100 Mosley Drive. I'm calling reference to meeting tomorrow, 4/21/25, about item number one, the city real estate tax rate. If you're going to raise the tax rate in order to build the amphitorium downtown, I'm not in favor of it. Thank you.
The next is Leslie Irving.
This, this is the council meeting on the real estate tax on the 22nd of April at 6:00 P.M. City council members, I am Leslie B. Irving, and my wife is Ann T. Irving. We live at 118 Runway Court, Lynchburg, Virginia, 24503, in the Blackwater Run Development. We're both retired and are 77 years old. I am unable to attend the public hearing regarding real estate tax rates for tax year 2025 due to the recent injury, due to a recent injury, and offer the following comments. The proposal to leave the tax rate at 89 cents is not realistic, and you should direct city managers to make adjustments that move the 2025 tax rate to the equalized rate of 76.767 cents. Based on the following, this is the only sound thing to do. Leaving the rate at 89 cents results in substantial increase for prop yielders, in our case, an increase of 11.36 percent. The changes at the federal level are currently trending in the wrong direction. Most retirees today rely on defined compensation plans. Our is a full 1Ks. We have taken the beating in the past couple months, hoping this will change, but there's no guarantee it will happen anytime soon. In the last three or four years, the cost of living has hit everyone hard. Groceries and the cost of eating have increased in the range of 30 to 40 percent affecting all of us. My suggestion to you is the following. Make sure you have the necessary funding for police, fire, and EMS. Continue joint efforts to fund our schools at a level that recognizes the downward trends in enrollment. Your efforts in this area are great. Next, direct the city managers to direct other managers to make every effort to cuss their requests by 5 percent. You may not be able to get that in every area, but you should be able to come up with substantial savings. If our governor can get $105 million in just procurement costs, this should work. Thanks for your willingness to serve the citizens of our great city. I served on the Amos County School Board for eight years and the Amos County Planning Commission for eight years and know what is required to be effective at the public service. Thanks for letting me comment.
The next is from Larry Bell.
Hi, yes, my name is Larry Bell. I live at 105 Earl's Court, Lynchburg, Virginia. I'm calling about the meeting, which will be held on April 22nd, and it's agenda item number one in regards to real property tax public hearing. I want to voice my opposition very strongly to any, the tax rate increase that I'm hearing is being considered upwards of 25 to 30 percent. This is, this is incredibly ridiculous. I would encourage the current members of council to, instead of automatically thinking the solution is to increase property taxes, to do an assessment and audit to see where there might be some fat that could be removed from the budget and a reconsideration of the amount. Most people that I've talked to, including myself, would not be upset with a 5 percent increase, but that it would be really devastating to a lot of people, particularly senior citizens like myself, who would have to absorb this, this cost. And it would, it might result in people even actually losing homes. I respectfully ask you to reconsider and do not support this type of exorbitant increase. Thank you.
Number seven is from Gwen Davis.
I'm calling to make my voice heard about the meeting that's to be held on April 22nd with the city council regarding the real property tax rate increase proposed in the city of Lynchburg. My name is Gwen Davis, and I live at Stone Gate Villas here in Lynchburg. I personally don't see how raising property tax on its citizens is going to benefit this city. We moved here five years ago from a much larger city, and we're shocked at the taxes we were required to pay. Now I'm in disbelief. The last thing the citizens of this town need is an increase in taxes. We personally are retired and on a fixed income and have already seen the need of trimming our budget considerably due to the inflation of the last four years. This has put a heavy burden on us, and the last thing we need is a tax increase. I'm sure we're not the only dissidents to this proposal, with many dissatisfied homeowners in the area who are considering leaving to a place more friendly to their living arrangements. Please consider what that would do to property values and a reduction in your tax base. Please reconsider your proposed increase and adjust your budget accordingly because that is what we have to do as citizens. Thank you for allowing me to leave a voice message.
The next is from Jonathan Jeffrey.
This message is for the April 22nd public hearing, agenda item number one, Real Property Tax Rate Public Hearing. My name is Jonathan Jeffrey. I live at 525 Little Creek Road in Lynchburg, Virginia. Regarding the property tax rate assessment, I'm sure there will be a lot of demands for lowering property taxes, but I believe that this notion misses the forest through the trees. The truth is that housing costs have skyrocketed. Many of our houses have been bought up by private equity firms that hold on to vacant houses to force scarcity, which raises the cost to buy any house. Housing is a human necessity for all of us. I would encourage housing policies that put people first, not real estate corporations first. Also, consider new developments that provide more diverse housing options rather than cul-de-sacs that only cost the city more to upkeep. I would recommend the Strong Towns model for improved housing development with a fiscally conscious approach. Thank you.
Number nine is from Joe Turk.
I'm calling about number 1.1, the Real Property Tax Rate. And the information I have is that the city manager is looking at a proposed tax increase of 46.7 percent. My name is Joe Turk. I live at 222 South Princeton Circle. I think this is definitely way too much, the 46.7. Even the equalized rate of 26.4 should be plenty, and seems, that still seems extreme considering inflation these days. But anyway, I hope that the city council will increase it no more than the equalized rate of 26.44 percent, and I think the 46 percent is way out of line that the city manager wants to increase it by. Thank you.
The next is from Charlie Hesse.
My name is Charlie Hesse. Regarding tonight's meeting, April 22nd, agenda item number one, regarding the real estate property tax, I am urgently asking city council to vote for the equalization route, that we do not incur another additional tax increase like route, that we do not incur another additional tax increase like was so painful in four, in, in two thousand twenty three. Uh, I'm, I'm a property owner in Ward one, reside there, have a rental property in Ward three on Ford Avenue. Uh, these increases are putting, uh, burden on the need to, first of all, increase rent for my tenants, um, as well as I can only imagine the other people in the community, especially the older folks that are essentially paying rent to the city to live in their own homes that they've got paid for. Please vote for equalization. Thank you.
The next is from Sherry Burnett.
Hi, I am, uh, calling to give my input for the public hearing, which is scheduled for April twenty second, twenty second, and I'd like to comment on the agenda, it looks like it's one point one, the real property tax rate. Um, and my comments are that I reviewed the proposed, um, potential rate hi- uh, rate hikes, and, uh, the city manager's proposed rate of a forty six percent increase seemed really high, and which really poses a big burden, that's a huge jump for, uh, a year, and I think if it gets, I think a smaller incremental rate makes more sense. I urge the council to vote for the equalized rate increase rather than, uh, a huge increase of forty six percent, which really is causes, is a really a burden in these tight economic times. Uh, my name's Sherry Burnett. I live at two 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 South Princeton Circle in Lynchburg. Thank you for, uh, listening to my comments.
Number twelve is from Christina Allen.
Yes, uh, my name is Christina Allen. Um, my residence is one three seven Marvin Place, Lynchburg, Virginia, two four five zero three, and I'm calling concerning the April twenty second public hearings meeting, and, uh, um, uh, my concern is the, uh, one point one real property tax rate, uh, public hearings, and, um, I just wanted to, to share that, that I think it would be better if s- somehow the budget were slimmed down. Um, you know, it's like the increase over the last several years is, uh, very difficult for, for families, and we've had to tighten up our budget, and I think that, that because we're also having to do the same thing, that this we probably should also, um, consider just tightening things up or, um, saving money until, uh, you have enough money to do some of the projects. Um, again, my name is Christina Allen. Thank you. Bye bye.
And our last is from Richard Allen.
My name is Richard Allen. I live at one three seven Marvin Place in Lynchburg. I'm referencing the meeting for the, uh, city council on April twenty second, and, uh, in reference to, uh, the real property tax public hearing, the one point one. And I'm very interested in, um, um, the city taking more concern about how much money they take away from the constituents, that is, we residents of Lynchburg. Uh, lower the taxes and, uh, balance the budget would be a really good idea, and that's what I would like to see you do. Thank you.
And those are all the voicemails that I have, Mr. Mayor, for this particular item.
Thank you. The public hearing on proposed real property tax is now closed. We will, we will go into a five-minute recess. Yes?
Before a recess, Mr. Mayor, um, I think the citizens have spoken loud and clear, and I'm going to make a motion to move that Lynchburg City Council set the real property tax rate at the equalization rate of zero point seven six seven per one hundred of assessed value for fiscal year twenty twenty six, effective July one, twenty twenty five, to avoid a net tax increase on our citizens. I further move that the city attorney will prepare and present the necessary ordinance to formalize this rate at our next regular city council meeting on May thirteenth, twenty twenty five, with any required business item briefing to be scheduled during the budget work session on May sixth, twenty twenty five. This motion will also include, obviously, directing the city manager to align the proposed F Y twenty six operating budget and F Y twenty six twenty thirty capital improvement program with the equalization rate that would prevent a net increase in real property tax on the individuals, families, and businesses of our city for council consideration. That is, I make that as a motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Mayor, I guess before council addresses that motion, what, what I would suggest is this: I don't, I think because the proposed budget is based on the eighty nine cents, and that is going to be heard tonight, um, I think it's going to create a procedural and legal issue before making a motion to set the rate before people have been able to speak on the proposed budget itself. So certainly if, if, uh, council wants to defer this till after all the public hearings, it, it can do that. Um, you know, we can address it then, but I would, I guess I would counsel, we probably wait till all of the public hearings are concluded. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would like, uh, to make a, uh, substitute motion, that we set the rate at seventy five cents, lower than equalization, and, and to include all of the other language that, uh, council emissions has about how that would process, the only thing would be to, uh, to make the rate seventy five cents per hundred dollars.
Mr. Wilder?
Oh, no, yes, me, yes, me. No, I'm not seconding that.
Okay, a substitute motion.
It sounds like the substitute motion dies for lack of a second.
Yes.
And certainly you all could still consider, as a body, what I've suggested based on the fact that we have, uh, uh, two other public hearings before addressing the rate.
I think, wha- what I'm going to do is, we're going to continue to hear the rest of the public hearing, and then after that, we will go into a section after the meeting is full.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, there is a motion that is correctly on the floor, has been correctly seconded. The proper thing, uh, we have to do once a motion is on the floor is, and you've stated it, which is the other requirement, is we really have to, to deal with it at this point.
Mr. Farodi?
Read our rules of procedure, please. As much as I want to entertain this discussion, it was not published on the agenda, and therefore it is out of order.
Mr. Mayor, I will offer that this is exactly...
The city attorney.
So, Mr. Mayor, it sounds like you have ruled the motion out of order at this time.
I didn't hear a ruling, Mr. City Attorney.
Certainly, uh, it's subject to appeal, you know, but as I mentioned...
Mr. City Attorney, there was no ruling made on the motion.
Mr. Mayor, what, did you...
I, I did move that we continue with the agenda.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just to be clear, two years ago, when we were in this same situation, we set the real estate tax rate on April fourth in the public hearing. I looked at all the emails that followed on April sixth, twenty twenty three, with myself, the city attorney, and the rest of council, and then the ordinance came after the fact. We actually, we actually set the direction, set the rate in the public hearing on April fourth.
I'm calling, okay? Tonight, we are here to hear the citizens. And I, and I call for a five-minute recess, and after the recess, we will go, we will come back, and we will continue with the public hearing.
Welcome back, everyone. Item number two on our agenda for tonight is water, sewer, and stormwater public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I believe that you were gonna allow the city attorney an opportunity to explain what the code section is and what the legal... Give the city attorney an opportunity to explain backed up by code section what the legal issue was with what happened before. I believe that that was... you were gonna allow that to happen.
Mr. City Attorney, you wanna speak to that?
Certainly, I could.
Could you clear that up for us a little bit, please?
Thank you, sir. The legal issue in setting a tax rate on the same night before the budget public hearing has been held... excuse me, has been held and heard, I think creates somewhat of a procedural legal question because we're also advertising the manager's proposed budget and tax rate as part of that public hearing. So to, I guess, I don't wanna word it like this, but to cut off and make a decision before all matters have been heard, before council, I think could create a legal issue for the city.
Question?
Thank you. That's really helpful, and I appreciate that clarity. What would be the issue with amending the agenda and setting the rate after that public hearing based on the comments tonight? Is there a legal issue with that?
So, to amend an ordinance, you need an ordinance. I do have a blank ordinance or essentially a draft ordinance that I had brought in the event a majority of council was set on doing this, this particular evening. So certainly, city council could suspend its rules of procedure, amend the agenda, review that blank ordinance for review, and then make its motion if it chose after all the public hearings. But what I would suggest is this, you know, and this is, this is kind of the attorney and counselor at law, right? So this is kind of the counselor component. You know, tonight, as the mayor had said, you know, it's a night for the citizens to be able to speak to this stuff. The manager may want to also speak to this after it before a decision is made, or city staff. So it may be worth council considering waiting until the next regular meeting to take this up. So it's all I'd offer.
Thank you for the legal insight. I appreciate it.
And if I may, just to kinda speak to the conversation at hand here, you know, it is now April 22nd. Two years ago, we had a rate on April 4th. And we are three weeks behind that. If we're gonna honor the will of the citizens that spoke tonight, most of which are left, and the people that called in, the manager's gonna need time to work on this. And waiting until our next regular meeting, which is May 13th, makes that window rather narrow for him to accomplish aligning the budget with the tax rate that we adopt if we choose to prevent a tax increase on our citizens. So with that said, respecting the time of staff, respecting the time of the manager, respecting the citizens that were here tonight that left, respecting the people that left our voicemails for us earlier, I'm gonna make a motion that we amend the agenda. And that we... and I'm thankful for this. Was not aware that you brought the blank ordinance, so I appreciate you doing that, Mr. City Attorney. Because I don't know if you paid attention, but in my initial motion, I actually asked to have the ordinance on the 13th. But since we have the blank ordinance with us, I don't think that a business item briefing would even be necessary at this point. I'm gonna make a motion that we amend the agenda to adopt a real estate tax rate at the close of all of the distinct and separate public hearings that we have the rest of this evening. That's my motion.
Second. I make a substitute motion that we give the city attorney enough time to revisit this, and we sit down with him and go over what can be done. What is the compromise? You come in here with a what, 7.6, okay? Where is the compromise? You pushing down the throat what you want? Not supposed to clap. Come on, don't, don't do that.
Mr. Mayor.
My motion is that we proceed with the agenda. And on the 13th, when we come back, we will take up the issue of the rate. That's what we're gonna do. That's my motion.
I'll second that. So, I guess to kinda restate what I think you're saying, Mayor, is that we would finish the night out, let the citizens be heard, and then pick up where we've left off at our next meeting to then discuss as a body what the different options might look like and not adopt a rate tonight while we have heard from our citizens. We would then discuss the different variations of what a budget would look like at the proposed rate from tonight, and talk through what that might look like with our city staff, and maybe other possibilities, and not lock something in tonight without having a full discussion amongst council so that we can see what the cause and effect of proposed rate changes would be. Is that a fair...
Yes, 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 ma'am.
So that, I would support that. So that's a substitute motion that's on the floor now.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Timmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I respectfully disagree. I believe we had a lot of time to speak and work with citizens and to speak with staff, and we are going to need time to adjust the rate to craft this budget appropriately in a way that it's not shotgunned. And we need to have the discussion after the rate in order to make sure that the priorities are being met. We've seen in the schools, and we've talked about this, there's a deferred maintenance issue in the schools. They have not been prioritized in the CIP. They need to be prioritized. There are certain areas in our city that need to be prioritized. There aren't endless resources, but there are always endless needs. And so with that, we have to look at what our jurisdiction is as government. Can you hear me, Chris? I saw you pointing at Mike. Okay. We have to look at what our jurisdiction is as government and be able to work within the confines of that. There were a lot of individuals that brought up creativity and creative approaches. Mr. Feraldi has talked about some creative approaches with the pool that I think are excellent and I've started pursuing. I think there's a lot of opportunity to take these creative approaches in various areas of the CIP, and that's gonna bring more community involvement. But as far as tonight, I believe it's more than appropriate at the end of the public hearings to vote on the rate and then to be able to work with city staff to make sure that those priorities are met moving forward.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I very much am opposed to this delay. I think our staff deserves to have time to know what the rate is gonna be and then to work the budget to fit in the rate. We as individuals have to learn to live within our means. We all understand that in our households. We need to set what the means are right now so they can learn to live within them. This is a rate that will still mean some people pay higher taxes. And when I ran, I made a commitment that I wanted people to write smaller checks than they wrote last year. I made a motion to try to get it down a little lower to 75 cents, which still would have meant some people had a tax increase and paid more in taxes. So 70... 7.676 is not what I wanted. 75 probably still wouldn't accomplish what I made a commitment to the people of Ward 3 that I would fight for. However, I understand the government is compromised, and I am compromising by going for the equalization rate. And I'm pleased that the city attorney has the form here to write the ordinance, to pass it, to get it done, so that these folks can get to work on the budget and know exactly what they're working with now rather than weeks from now. This is our one window of opportunity, and putting it off puts a lot of pressure on them to try to figure out where we're gonna settle. I think they deserve to know where we stand. We had six people that are up here that ran on lowering taxes. This shouldn't be that hard. This shouldn't be that hard.
I lower taxes.
And...
I lower taxes.
Let me, let me finish, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We all, we all said that. I think we all meant it in our hearts. I may have meant it a little more than most. I'm not at all ashamed of being the advocate for people keeping more of their own money, and that's what I wanna continue to do. And I don't see any reason to delay to do it, so that's why I will oppose the seconding.
Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna start off with something that I've heard you say to me many times. You said to me, and I believe I've heard you say it publicly to others, if you come to me in a good way, I'm gonna treat you in a good way. If you come to me in a bad way, I'm still gonna treat you in a good way. I'm gonna let you know that you just came to me in a bad way, and I'm still gonna treat you in a good way.
Yes, I do.
Because when you said that I'm trying to shove what I want down, please, please get this chamber in order, Mr. Mayor. Please get this chamber in order. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And when you just sat here and told me that I was trying to shove what I wanted down the throats
Yes.
of this council, in fact, we heard from 49 people. Out of those 49 people that we heard from, 36 of them said, "Don't increase our taxes."
Right.
So if you're gonna accuse me of shoving something somebody wants down somebody's throat, please accuse me of shoving what the citizens that were here and spoke to the tax rate and have left wanted, because that's what I was doing. I was doing my job. And I'm gonna take a little, a little trip down memory lane that directly affects this, and you know, it's, it's why we're gonna oppose, or why I'm gonna oppose this, is because we already know what to do. We talked about this. We know what to do. So, and so this is, this is the fiscal year 2023 capital improvement program, right? 23 to 27. Downtown parking deck facility, existing structure continues to decline and is aging beyond reasonable ongoing maintenance. Revitalization and growth in downtown are creating a need to have added parking capacity. It's also part of the master plan to have a mixed use, which means not just parking, maybe something else, garage, to increase parking and boost economic development. In 2023, the price tag of that was $17.3 million. Principal and interest, that's what they, that's what they said. Then the first budget when we showed up here, fiscal year 2024, midtown parking deck replacement. Deck is at the end of its useful life, 60 years plus, and needs replacement. Will add retail along Commerce Street. So that's the same parking deck, a mixed-use parking deck. In one year, it went from 17.3 million to, what do you know, $51.6 million. $51.6 million. And you know what? These are Donna Witt's comments that she typed up in the minutes in Civic Clerk, because we can pull up those, those notes. And Larry Taylor asked the city manager, "Have you considered restoring this instead of tearing it down and replacing it?" Last year, it wasn't on our CIP. This year, midtown parking deck repairs, long-term repairs to deck to preserve its lifespan, total $622,503. So Mr. Taylor, Mayor Taylor,
Yes.
you actually have said what we need to do. Instead of spend, 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 tear down and rebuild, restore. And by doing that, by saying that, in a two-year period, Mayor Taylor, you saved our citizens $51 million, and I appreciate that.
Yes.
I appreciate that.
Yes.
And that was something that everybody was, you know, even, even Councilmember Dolan said, "We probably should privatize that garage if, if, you know, at the price tag that it was." So, you know, when I look at that and I see a project goes from 17.3 million one year to 51.6 million the next year because it's at the end of its useful life, and then I see long-term deck repairs to preserve its lifespan for the same parking deck at $622,000. I thought it was at the end of its useful life. So I've got a lot of questions about how that information is prepared and put together, because it sounds arbitrary to me. But, but aside from that, we have got to give the staff time to do this. It's, it's, it's gonna be an adjustment. And two years ago, we set the rate on April 4th, and I just read the emails between you and I, and I think, I think I shared the emails with, did I share the emails with you? I think I shared the emails with somebody. April 6th, there was an email exchange, and then the ordinance came back later. But now, I'm so happy to hear that you actually brought the, fill in the blank ordinance with you. So you were ready for us to get this done tonight. So what I'm saying is, I'm gonna be opposing your substitute motion, because I think that we should give city staff time. We've heard from plenty of people about the high taxes, the increase. Give us an opportunity, if you want a different rate, if you want a different rate, the time to debate it would be at the end of these public hearings, and we can debate the rate. And just because we set a rate, if we end up with a rate set this evening, it doesn't prevent us, I'm assuming, Mr. City Attorney, from changing that, should we decide we need to do that down the road? Is that correct?
If you set a rate tonight, and you all say you hear from the city manager, and he's, and he presents issues that cause you to say, "We need to raise this rate," you're gonna have to do another public hearing.
So, but if we set a rate that we didn't need to raise, then we would not need to do another public hearing. Is that correct?
If you were to lower and lower it, no. If it was to go lower and lower.
Fair enough. I think it's appropriate, you know, we're three weeks past where we were in the last budget process during the reassessment year. I think to respect the time of staff... I think to respect the time of staff so that we don't run out the clock because we have to have a balanced budget by the end of June, I think it would be appropriate. Actually, I request that you withdraw your motion and that we continue with this tonight.
Okay. Mr. Wild?
Thank you. I support the motion, Mayor Larry Taylor. First of all, the staff, if we want to change the rate, the citizens need to understand what are the consequences of that and what are we willing to compromise to give up? Is it trash? Is it certain services are we going to be willing to give up, or less money for our schools? We need to understand the consequences of that and just see, is there even, I'm going to hear from the staff, what are their thoughts on that? You know, you always, you want to pay lower taxes, but you've got to have a balance in what the city needs are and what the city has enough finances to do what we need to do based on our bond rating and various other things. So I'd like to defer and hear from the city team and see what the thoughts are before we rush and make a decision tonight. Thank you.
Yes. Mayor, Mr. Bender, can I ask you a question, please?
Can I be perturbed?
Yes, sir.
Yeah?
Yes, sir.
Creative nature.
Thank you.
Getting the mayor, vice mayor members of the city council.
Mr. Bender, if we did not set a rate tonight and came back on the 13th, would that give you enough time to adjust the budget?
That is an impossible question for me to answer, considering all seven of you are my wonderful bosses who are currently amidst and amuck trying to decide how best the city moves forward. I dislike that you are where you are. It's, I can understand Mr. Missions and I think Vice Mayor Deimers and maybe Ms. Timbers' suggestion for the staff, and I can appreciate the others of you who are suggesting maybe another outcome. What I come back to is what city managers do at root here in Virginia. In Virginia, it's a council-manager form of government. And my job every day is to wake up and make sure that there are certain services that are deployed in a well-meaning way and in a fashion that we're a good steward so that we can ensure that people keep choosing Lynchburg each and every day. What happens in the 20-plus years that I've been in this business of working in municipal government is that I propose and you dispose. And so I have proposed what I think is a fair and reasonable, and I understand the public hearings this evening, and what I mean by that is to say I'm doing my best, understanding my 20-plus years of running municipal corporations on how best to move the city forward, taking into account several things and always with your feedback and the feedback of your, I always say that I'm a CEO of a municipal corporation wherein you are the board of trustees to which that we respond to our shareholders, which are our residents. And so it is with each and every year, one of my principal things, I think I'm called Matthew, I think I'm called under charter, the Budget Commissioner? Something along those lines? I'll make sure that there's no tag that says that. So Mayor, I understand your question. I do. I will do my best to do whatever this body decides. It's a bit of a, not unfair because that's my job. It's just a tough place to be, if you can understand that. Because invariably, however I answer that, there are people that are going to be either with me or without me, as far as what that means. Because I know each one of you support me and you have. You have come and you tell me when I'm not getting it right, and I appreciate that. There are ways in which that you do that are very supportive. I will offer, in amidst all this, and this is just by practice procedure, and Madam Clerk, make sure that I'm saying this right, the 29th is our joint meeting with Lynchburg City Schools. We have proposed, between then and the 13th, there is an optional meeting, if I recall, that's correct?
Correct.
May 6th. So before you get to May 13th, there is another purpose, because budget is so much fun, and I just wanted to make sure there was enough days that we had options to come together and talk about it. So in amidst all of that, there is another date that isn't as far away as the 13th, and maybe certainly not this evening. But what I come back to, Mayor Taylor, is that I propose and this body and its wisdom disposes, and whatever that looks like, we and the city staff will be prepared to ensure that this council has an informed approach to this city's fiscal year. 26, Donna, is that where we are? 26 budget. I tend to lose sight. So Mayor, I didn't really answer your question, and I'm doing my best to tap dance up here a bit, and I'm just being honest with all that. But that's the reality of where we are. So to the degree that I can and the city staff can be helpful to move the city forward, that's what we will do.
Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Thank you for putting yourself through this. Thank you for coming up here. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I will say that more time for you to deal with what I think is inevitable of a lower rate than you proposed, it's got to help. That's just natural physics. You've got more time to deal with it.
Yes, sir.
You can come back to us with better ideas if you've got more days to think about it. Okay? That's my understanding. I will say this, and it's not meant to be derogatory to you.
Sure.
But like I said before, six of us up here have run on lower taxes. So I do think we can probably figure out which way things are going to go, hopefully. And I feel, this is a personal feeling, that there is a disconnect somewhere between what you proposed, and it came up tonight with several speakers.
Sure.
Why did we let you propose such a tax increase? And even my lower rate of 75 cents still raises some people's taxes. Okay? So that disconnect is something I think we need to work on. I think we need to understand the nature of this city, and the voters have spoken so loudly, and they did it again tonight. And there's a strong majority that says, hey, you know, I'm talking about these folks that are on fixed incomes, and you've tried to address that. But that's not the whole issue. It's not just the elderly. There are people here who own optometry companies. And they're not, you know, poor. They're not kings, but they're not poor. But this is going to cause them to have to make some decisions, hard decisions. And of course, we don't want to hurt our elderly, but it's not just our elderly that are on fixed incomes. We have to be cognizant. And I hear them. I want them to know, I hear them. I'm listening.
Right.
And I just want to make sure you are.
I am. Mayor, may I address the Vice Mayor?
Yes.
And this is maybe a bit, to the degree that there's a disconnect, I know that I work my best to ensure there isn't, whether or not it's my one-on-ones that I have with each one of you, the one-on-ones that we did prior to proposing this budget, the budget retreat that we put forward. And in all of that, what I have to balance is the needs, if you will, plus also the elements or aspects of what you bring to bear. And sometimes, and oftentimes, the politic, the political piece, I have to be agnostic to. And so when I come to you and I propose things, it's not a disconnect. It's 20-plus years of doing this job and understanding what it takes to run a municipal corporation. A couple of years ago, we reduced the rate by 22 cents. That went 3 cents below what was then equalization. So it went from $1.11 to what would, if it was equalized, 93, we actually ended up on 89 cents. And that was $17 million that came out of the operating. And what we didn't do, in conjunction with that, there were certain initiatives, remember the politics you talked about, and this is prior to you, Mr. Vice Mayor, there was a direct interest in supporting public safety. All right? And that is good. And that is the appropriate thing. And there was also infrastructure, and there was also economic development. Those were all different keys. And understand, year to year, since those two years, those things have only gotten more expensive. And so to afford what you've proposed and promised, which is increases, and to meet those expenses, that's what I have to look at. And I understand growth. Talked about it in my budget message. Understand that we are blessed, that what we've seen through, because this happens over two years, not one year, in most localities, we've seen a tremendous amount of growth. And so what I also take into account in meeting with the seven of you is also the interest of this body. And so if anything, I hope that I'm connected. Because one of the things I heard that you were particular about was also people on fixed incomes. And that's where we learned and leaned into the senior disabled tax relief and expanded it this year. There were other elements or aspects that we just simply couldn't afford, candidly. And that there are elements or aspects of this that, in promising the things to move a city forward, general wage increases, also promises to swarm personnel. Mrs. Timmer, you talked a little bit about schools earlier. I will say, in going where you proposed to go, there's only been so much by way of debt service. And absolutely, Mr. Missions brought up, and these are the things that helped kind of create, was it sharpening? I forget my biblical things sometimes, sharpening, that kind of thing.
Not.
And that we asked a question that had been there for a while about a parking garage. And what we found through interactive components of it was it wasn't that, it wasn't as expensive nor, and we had a different path to take. And so Vice Mayor Deimers, I am doing my best each and every day to stay connected to you, 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 and to hear exactly what it is. And with all that, doing my best to thread this needle here in Lynchburg to ensure that we can prosper. And some of that, understood, if we move in a direction where you propose, I will show you how to get there, and we'll do it the best way that we can. And understand, it wasn't that I wasn't listening at all. In fact, I'm acutely listening to you and to your peers about the needs, the desires, and the aspects of these cities. And also taking into account promises that have been made that I know that you want to keep as it relates to swarm personnel, to the workforce, and making sure that they see increases. And I know that this year, particularly as it remains to schools, that was a big, big element of what you guys, and to do those type things, it was 180-plus million that they proposed in capital improvement. I proposed 60. It barely touches it. Right? And so all these are all these things that come into bear. And I understand well, politics of what you explain, and I don't divorce it from it. I do not overlook it. I take it to heart. You have great conversations with me. So to the degree that you believe that there's a disconnect, I pray that there's not. And if you want to move this direction as a body, I will help you get there the best way that I can. But where I proposed was not by any means leading with my chin or anyone, or anything else. It was taking into account what I thought were seven people's direction to me about how best to move forward, and also with that, my own professional background and years in service with it. So thank you for the opportunity, Mayor, Vice Mayor, to respond.
Since you kind of jumped in before I was done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I really wasn't quite done, so if I can just say one more thing.
Absolutely.
I watched that. I wasn't on council then, but I watched all of the discussions and the debate on it, and I remember it like it was yesterday. And when the 89 cents rate was discussed, I know, I heard it from not just you, but others, similar to what you just said just now. Here's all these services that are so important. And there was this idea that, you know, don't, if you do the 89 cents, you know, the sky's going to fall. The sky didn't fall, and you made it work. And I have confidence in you.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
That you will make it work. And I think the extra time that we're going to give you, if we can support this rate, will give you the ability to come back to us with reasonable changes to your budget that you proposed that don't take our priorities off the list. You will listen to us. I know you will. You do it all the time. And you will make sure, just like last time, here's our priorities. Do what you will, but keep the police, keep the fire, keep the this, keep the schools, keep the things that we ran on, that we made a commitment to our citizens for, and help those stay up here, and then let's work with this down here to make that rate work. And you did it last time, and the sky did not fall, and I don't think it's going to again this time. Like I said, some people are still going to write more money, bigger checks to the city. Maybe not as much, but I'm not the tax increase guy in case anybody's confused.
Sure.
So thank you for your help.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
A couple of reminders. So, thank you. I don't know if anybody else else wants to talk to you, but...
Did you? Mr. Mayor, may I take my seat?
Thank you, sir.
So we did, to your point, Mr. Mayor, lower taxes. So that did happen two years ago significantly. So for the reminders that we're getting about council, people that ran on, campaigned, that happened. Okay? So secondly, I appreciate the 49 people who spoke tonight, and that's wonderful. But as an at-large representative, that means that 79,950 people did not. We have to remember all of those. Okay? So I know that those 49 do represent a lot of people that did not speak, and I'm not discounting that, but there still are 79,950 people who were not here. Okay? I want to remind everybody also, since we're talking about two years ago, what happened when the rate was decided first? Because I remember very clearly. We had to work backwards from there. And we had to decide what had to be cut after that, but it wasn't pleasant because then we had to go, well, what in our public safety package that was awesome, that was very well put together by our city manager, because he did listen to all of us very well, and it was the best public safety package this city has ever seen, ever seen. And it was on the verge of collapsing because of what we did by voting on the rate first. And it almost fell apart. Because of that public safety package, staying intact, which we had to fight our butts off for, our police officers are the highest paid they've ever been, our firefighters are the highest paid they've ever been, our retention rate is better than it's ever been. We addressed compression pay, which would not have been done had we not been able to save it. But what happened after that? Then we had to worry about what was on the table? Department cuts, city jobs, which we were sworn would not happen. Sworn! No jobs would be lost. And that's what we had to decide, decide between what city jobs and the schools. And what happened? Levelized funding to the schools is what happened. That's who lost that year because we couldn't do it all because we decided the rate first. And all I asked for, all I asked for was that we just have the discussion. I never said that we couldn't cut the rate. I just said, let's talk through what the consequence could look like before we set the rate so that we didn't end up there. That is all we're proposing tonight. No one's saying, let's not cut it. Let's just be sensible so we're not caught up there. You guys, our city manager has listened to us again. He put $60 million for the schools. That's only half of what the schools need. Only half! They need over $100 million. And again, it's for buildings that are falling apart, y'all. And he's only giving half. He's asking for money for the city pool that our families who cannot afford to swim anywhere else are going. And all they're asking for is a pool that they can be proud of to go to. They deserve a pool to be proud and safe to swim in. And we had a sweet girl who was homeless at one time speak earlier about the benefits of community pools and libraries, and he's put that in there too for the people who believe in those resources. He has listened to everybody. Now, we have the opportunity to go through in the next conversations that we might have in the next meetings that the mayor and I are asking to have, and maybe make some modifications. And we might have to. That is all we're asking to do. Doesn't make us less of who we are up here to say, let's just slow our roll just a tad. We have a very capable staff. If we have to push it a couple of weeks, the world's not going to fall apart in Lynchburg. But let's just have the full conversation. Nothing has to happen tonight. People will still vote for you, even if you get the rate a little bit later than you wanted, or it's not exactly what you wanted. It's okay. Let's just be sensible. With that, can we please vote, sir?
Mr. Wilder had, Mr. Wilder first.
I'm making, just real quick, again, because personally, I have to say, real quick. Again, I just want to thank the city manager, the city team. I really appreciate you listening to the voices. You're listening to the city council members, all the individual meetings, individual meeting with the attorney, the individual meeting with the clerk and the finance team. I just want to thank you. We appreciate your work and your efforts. You know, I know you are sincere, and you have the heart of the people. And when we look at the budget, how you balance this and how to work with, try to give money for the schools and how to give money for this, that's a servant's heart. You know, in public service, it's not a, it's not an area where you get a lot of rewards for or appreciation for. You know, if you're like in the church work, you don't get a lot of working with kids. You don't get a lot of appreciation, a lot of thank yous, because they just don't do that. So again, we appreciate the work you're doing and listening to the voices of the people. You know, a lot of times, I know you work in situations that people don't, I've just noticed, people... just noticed, people always talk the best, and then I just want to apologize. And I want to tell you, we appreciate the work you're doing. And like even when, when the rate went from $1.11 to 89 and to equalize, it was a much different amount, and it's still with lower, you did make it work. You made it work, but I know it was stressful. I know the staff had to make sacrifices. I know y'all still didn't get the things you wanted to do. And so many times, we look at infrastructure situations, some things, you wonder why certain buildings fall in the park, but why didn't they fix that? Because they didn't have the money to fix it when they told you to 25 years ago. Sandusky was on the, was near repairs when I was on the school board 20 years ago, and it still hasn't been repaired because they didn't have the resource, them funds to do that. And the last point, where we had a presentation for the fire department, they showed that 10-plus million dollars or whatever amount had increased in the fire department's budget. How much of an increase have we seen in the school budget? Thank you.
Mr. Timmer.
I'm gonna go off track for just a second, and I, I love Dr. Wilder's intent to honor. He, he's always very intentional to honor the people around him, and I just so appreciate that. We're often on different sides of the issues, but I, I just love that about you, Dr. Wilder. A couple of things that, you're good. A couple of things that the city manager brought up that I, yeah, I, one is more of a comment, but the other's a clarification. You talked about 17 million coming out of the operating budget, and I just wanted to clarify that that was not 17 million decrease from the previous budget, but that was 17 million less than the proposed budget.
Mrs. Timmer?
Yeah, thanks.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for letting me approach and answer the question.
So if you do the math, and please hold me to this because this is not, I'm an attorney only on TV these days, and.
And a seminarian.
And a, and a seminarian.
And a dancer.
And all those things.
All the things.
All those things. So if you took the rate at that, at that time, the penny was worth $650,000. If the math on 11 or 22 cents is roughly 17 million.
Sorry, I, I know I'm cutting you off.
No, it's all right.
I'm not talking about the pennies worth. I'm talking about the total operating budget. Was there a $17 million decrease, not in the proposed budget, but from fiscal year 2024 to fiscal year 2025? Was there a $17 million decrease in the operating budget?
I think I understand what you, so.
It was from the dollar 11.
It was from the dollar 11. Yes. And so I, so to your point, I understand what you're saying. So in my, you're right, Mrs. Timmer, there was not a decrease there. It was in the overall, if you take that penny.
It was the penny amount.
Correct.
Right.
And so, and then, the only comment that I was making to the Vice Mayor was then, alongside those, we made investments in other areas that then created further expenses, and that's what you've seen in public safety by way of proportion in the pie chart we've drawn.
I, I appreciate that. No, thank you.
Too much there?
No, it's, it's the need to separate out individual issues because I feel like a lot of the time, it becomes conflated in our conversation, right? Because we're talking about the rate amount, we're talking about the real estate assessments, we're talking about the value of the penny, and all of these things, when it comes into a conversation, you can say there is an increase here and a cut there, but is it the proposed budget? Is it the operating budget? How are these things interacting with each other? And I think there's often confusion. So I just wanted to clarify that the $17 million that you referenced that came out of operating was out of the proposed budget based on really a tax increase because of the valuation increase, not from a 2024 fiscal year budget to the 2025 fiscal year budget.
I understand.
Thank you. I, I'm, sorry, I'm gonna retain the floor for, thank you. Thank you.
We're good.
Yes, thank you so much. It, it's just really important to clarify these issues. Another point that I did just want to touch on, and, and maybe I'm just a little sensitive to this because I am a politician now, but what was referenced is politics, that essentially we're dealing with politics, and I really appreciate city staff. We can't do this job without you. But it is an interplay. It's not substance on one side and politics on the other. It is, we're going door-to-door, and we're recognizing what people are facing in their day-to-day lives. And this is about homeownership. This issue is really about homeownership and the sustainability of homeownership in Lynchburg. And in addition to that, we know that this gets passed on to renters. It negatively impacts them. And right now, we have a very turbulent economy. And I'm looking at elements in the CIP that I think are beautiful. I think it's, I think it's wonderful to have a public pool. I think it's wonderful to, one, we, we've got to address sewage, we've got to address mold, we've got to address the HVAC systems in the schools. These are, those are musts. It's wonderful to have an aesthetically pleasing library. I had the privilege of visiting one as a kid frequently, and it was, it was wonderful. But there are creative opportunities to be able to address some of these issues. Library resources are largely geared more towards really workforce, I think, at this point. Computer labs, how can we incorporate that with some of the community outreach centers? What are some of the creative approaches that we can do? And as I've mentioned, these ideas of various types to stakeholders, there's interest in private investment and donations to be able to address certain issues with the pool or to be able to address certain issues with the library. And so we've had a number of citizens ask us to roll up our sleeves, and I think we do it. I think we equalize the rate, protect homeownership. That's gonna create stability in our community. And then we get creative to address some of the desires in the community, and that's when community comes together, not when it's compelled by government, but when it's an invitation to be a part of an identity and to support the community. And I think we have a unique privilege to be able to do that, and I think that's the role of council, to lead that trajectory, to be able, I'm, I'm not gonna call people out in the crowd, but there are people across the aisle that I talk with regularly. You come to the meetings, and I love it. And we're able to have substantive conversations about what are things that we can do to build those bridges and to be able to effectuate change. And I think this is a real opportunity for that, but we have to protect homeownership in our community. We have to make sure that renters are not unable to afford rent because the home, or the property owners have to raise the rates. I mean, this, this really is a big deal. Inflation's gone up a lot. It's a turbulent economic time. This is, this is a major issue. It's not a political issue. It becomes political, but it is a substantive issue about sustainability in our community. Thank you.
And Ms. Timmer?
Yeah.
Roll up your sleeves. I got a job for you. I want you to go over to James Crossson, clean the pool out, open it up.
I have someone who wants to do that, Mr. Mayor. But, Mr. Mayor, that discussion happens, let me, I'm gonna take the floor back because, because you're calling people out. No, I'm gonna take the floor back.
Yes, yes. Call the question.
Mr. Mayor, that was inappropriate. That was inappropriate.
Okay, we'll get somebody else's chance.
Chris, I haven't spoken on any of this. I'll simply say this. I appreciate the fodder for feeding a fake news service like the Lynchburg Herald. I called a question. Let's vote.
Mr. Mayor.
I called a question.
Call the question.
Mr. Mayor, there, there needs to be some things corrected that were stated that are just absolutely not accurate.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
I appreciate an opportunity to respond. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If this is gonna continue, I'm gonna slip outside and hear folks on the water sewer and stormwater public hearing in the hall.
I'll be quick, Mr. Mayor. I'll be quick. I'll be quick. So, Mr. Mayor, you know, one of the things that I want to point out is there was information that was put out here about the revenues from the adopted FY '24 budget. So just to be clear, the 2023 budget had $207 million in revenue. The adopted '24 budget, which was our first budget with the 89 cents, had 214 million adopted, and then it jumped to about 225 million. So what happened is we actually, the '24 adopted budget, we started with a projected $25.4 million unassigned fund balance, which is the surplus, and we ended up with $40.3 million in the unassigned fund balance. That's the actual numbers. So if, if we're gonna sit up here and we're gonna talk about these things, let's just be accurate and factual about what happened. Same thing, like the discussion about the schools. To say the schools got level funding in 2023, or excuse me, 2024 is not accurate. The schools in 2024 had an increase in their total budget. It went from roughly, I got it right here, hold on. It went from about 100 million to 105 million. And the, you know, so, so the, so, so when you look at that, that's not level funding. And to say that what we did was devastating to the schools' operating budget, I would disagree. I think that actually that was one of the best moves we could have made, because what we did was we, we noticed that there was a bloated administration, and we took action, and we took money out of administration and put it into instruction. That's what we did. It was the largest instruction budget in the history of Lynchburg City Schools up until that time. It was a massive increase. And how do I know? Well, I'm married to a teacher, right? So I know when I see those contracts come in because of the failed school boards year after year where they did the minimum, that this was the first time in a decade that my wife didn't get the minimum increase in her salary. That's a fact.
Okay, thank you.
That's a fact. So if we're going to speak to what is going on, we need to, we need to use the facts. I, I appreciate everybody's passion, but the reality is, we did fine last time, and I'm gonna just strongly oppose your substitute motion. We should address this tonight and give staff the time to work on it.
Motion on the floor, let us vote on it.
The substitute motion is to proceed with this hearing and come back at a later date. I'll call for the voice vote. Councilmember Farady?
No.
Councilor Missions?
To proceed with this hearing?
Yes. The motion was to proceed with all the hearings and then come back at a later date.
No.
Councilor Reed?
Yes.
Councilor Timmer?
I'm gonna clarify as well. Proceed with the hearings tonight, come back.
This is a substitute motion by the mayor.
Okay, by the mayor.
And Councilor Reed.
Okay, no.
If they can clarify, okay. Councilor Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deemer?
No.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion fails.
Mr. Mayor, I call the pending question on the primary motion now.
The primary motion is I, we'll see, amend the agenda and adopt the .767?
That was not the primary motion.
After all the public hearings?
The, 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 the primary motion was to amend the agenda to discuss adopting a tax rate at the end of the public hearings.
Okay.
Not a specific rate, but to discuss adopting a tax rate.
Thank you for clarifying. So that is the motion on the floor now. Councilor Farady?
No.
Councilor Missions?
Yes.
Councilor Reed?
Nope.
Councilor Timmer?
Yes.
Councilor Wilder?
No.
Vice Mayor Deemer?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes. Oh, shoot. Let me vote again.
It sounds like, Mayor, you're wanting to change your vote or reconsider.
I oppose, yes.
Okay?
Okay.
I oppose.
And the motion fails.
Can somebody please repeat what just happened? This is very confusing.
Both motions, procedurally, both motions have failed, so we'll continue on with the public hearings as scheduled.
What was the motion? What was the motion that was just voted on?
The motion that was just voted on was to amend the agenda, to amend the agenda to add a discussion of the, the real estate tax rate at the end of all the public hearings, and that motion failed.
So the time when you can't vote on.
That's correct, not tonight.
We'll now proceed with the water sewer, stormwater, public hearing. Speakers will be recognized in order in which they are signed up. Ms. Finney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first I have on our list, again, is Katrina Ing, followed by Andrea Hurt, then Rebecca Andrea Hurt, follow, oh, I'm sorry, there's Ms. Ing. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry, didn't see you there.
Thank you again for hearing me out. Since I moved here, I've, was unaware of how much we are actually charged for water. The water is in the measurements of a 1 HCF measurement, which equals 748 gallons of water. I am a very conservative person, I live alone, and I'm concerned about my water. I do appreciate the ion water program that came out. It allows me to see how I'm spending my water and my bills. I have been fighting this now since then, that the water is overcharged in the first place. I should not be paying my bills before I use that 748 gallons. Until I reach that 748 gallons, I don't mind paying the money that I, that I owe on that. So I don't think that any, we're really fairly being billed correctly in the first place. I think that at this point, there is, needs to be some watching of how people are spending their money on those water bills. And I do recommend that everyone take a look at their water bills to see if there's being corrected. Again, I am more conservative than most people, and I do believe that our job isn't always to raise things, and I think it's, our job is to learn how we can live in a way that we can conserve what we have. We, we overuse our natural resources, and one day, they are going to be gone. And we need to be aware that we need to learn how to be a community that uses our resources wisely. And I think that at this point, we're a community that is so used to getting that we're not used to giving. And the giving comes from the heart and souls and the hands and feet of people, and that is the community that I believe that we need to be. I believe that we need to see that when we conserve, we can give others the opportunity to use it as they need to. So it's not just about us. We do have to pay for the water for pools and stuff like that, like you've all mentioned. You would like them. But I do believe that those things can come from being conservative, how we use our resources so that we can spend the money wisely on those things. And again, I'm gonna repeat that those people that can afford to, I think that's great. We should be able to donate. We should be able to have funds, just like Ms. Timmer said. We should be able to learn to use and give as a community, to join forces for each other. That's what a, a city really is all about. It's not about raising taxes, it's not raising costs, it's about how do we work together, hands and feet? Be the people that we're supposed to be. God gave us hands and feet to be used, to help America to be the best it can, not by just giving things away and making other people do your work for you. What about you getting involved? Thank you.
Next is Andrea Hurt, followed by Rebecca Taylor.
Like the woman before, I'm very conservative in my water consumption. I don't think I can use any less in function. Water is a necessity, not a luxury. But as our rates go up, most of the, most of what we're paying for are fees. Hardly any of my bill is water. And because it's not a luxury, I suggest that we start looking at the city as to other ways, is, I don't know what to call it, not a subsidy or something, be a creative way of allowing people to live with dignity in their homes and using their water resources wisely. That's number one. And one way you could cut your cost is fluoride is put in the, I checked with the gentleman outside, fluoride is in our water. And if you've been paying attention to RFK Junior, he is, he was promoting the removal of fluoride. Fluoride is a toxin. The Nazis use it in concentration camps to mollify their captives. It was done by an industry to get rid of their waste so they didn't have to pay for their waste that they generated from their manufacturing. They convinced the municipalities to put it in, so they got paid for disposing of a toxin. And this is now coming out. I learned this decades ago. Fluoride is not what they're proposing it to be. And they, and we're paying for the fluoride, so there's one way you could save some money So there's one way you could save some money and also help with people's health. So I suggest that we find creative solutions to the things we face. We cannot continue to do business as usual. It is going to take us down a road that the end will not be pleasant on many fronts. So I strongly recommend that we do that. And I also think there's something wrong with the numbers that I'm getting to. I'm glad to hear that somebody else is feeling that way. I've not had time to dig deep on that one. But there are many things in this city that we could do creatively. I dug in through a political campaign, and the number of things I found waste, fraud, and abuse was appalling, absolutely appalling. So I think if the city manager and his staff started looking and maybe asked for some suggestions from the staff as how we can save money, how about figuring ways to save money instead of how many more ways to spend the money? Be creative. We can do this. We're Americans. We've got the gumption. It's the will that is missing. And looking for new ways for new solutions, a new day, a better way. Thank you.
Lastly, Rebecca Taylor. Rebecca Taylor? Okay. Doesn't look like Ms. Taylor is here. And that was all on my list.
That's all your list? Is it? Yes.
For folks, this is regarding the water sewer and stormwater public hearing, not the budget. So I know there's some questions about that, but...
Correct, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak that's not on the list?
Just for the record, it's Risa Hayes, Ward One. I wasn't going to speak, but I want to speak on the comment that was just made. I'd like the council to be extremely careful about listening to anything from RFK Junior. The reason I am saying that is because I am autistic. I am the type of people that he is trying to eliminate. So you're going to sit here and listen to any medical advice from someone who's had a literal worm eat part of his brain? That is irresponsible. Fluoride in the water is a thing, yes, but the FDA has done many studies on it. So to sit here and to make this big, huge deal that has nothing to do with sewage, has nothing to do with the cost of anything, it's ridiculous. So as an autistic person who is currently dealing with this health administration targeting my people, I will not sit and listen to it. So that is my thing. I'm sorry it's not exactly on the water, but I do not want this council to take any advice from someone who hates my people. And that's what it is. It's my people who are being discriminated against, and they're trying to make a registry, and they're starting with their wellness farms. So do not take any advice from someone so disgustingly evil. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. Josh Iger, Ward One. I moved from Blacksburg to here in Lynchburg. My water bill in Blacksburg was higher than what is here in Lynchburg. I appreciate all the services that Lynchburg offers. I just want to add that as a point of clarity, that the rate that we pay for water here is extremely low, and the services that are provided are very good for that level. There is no reason to decrease the amount of money that we pay for water. I support fluoride being in the water. I like my teeth being healthy. Fluoride supports healthy teeth. And I'd like the pool to be, you know, I'd like the pool to continue to have water, and I like all those services. I'd like them capped. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter Sepharati, Ward One. I decided to speak because of a comment that Mrs. Hurt made about the cost of water, and someone else mentioned that it's, they're frugal, but it's very expensive for them. And I don't really care what people pay for water in other places because we're talking about Lynchburg here. So I thought maybe the city could propose billing for water where every household is given a free allotment, you know, allotment without charge, some kind of a base amount that they don't have to pay for, and then over and above that, they have to pay for it. Maybe you raise the rate a little bit to offset that. But that way, people wouldn't be in a position of having great anxiety about if they have too many glasses of water or, you know, whatever, if they take a shower for two minutes too long. So just consider that. Again, people are talking about thinking differently about solving problems. We need to be thinking differently about stuff and not doing the same thing. And I'm just going to end my time here by saying, please do not make any decisions based on emotional outbursts and people who feel like they're being threatened personally by what's going on here. This has to do with fiscal responsibility and making it work for all people. Thank you.
No one else who want to speak to the water sewer, stormwater rates? Ms. Alicia, any voicemails from?
There are none.
No voicemail? Public hearing for water sewer, stormwater rates are now closed. Item number three. FY26 budget, operating and Capitol Public Hearing. Speakers will be recognized in order which they are signed up to speak. Ms. Finney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, we'll be listing four off at one time. So that's Dr. Beth White, leading us, representing the MLK LCC, then David Levy, representing the Woodland Neighborhood, then Ben Copeland, representing Lynchburg City Schools, then Jim Quattlebaum.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, members of council. My name is Beth White. I am speaking on behalf of the Mark Luther King Lynchburg Community Council. I am the Secretary of that Board. We are an official city board that meets in the Dr. King Center for the Human Rights Room of the Lynchburg Public Library. When I first moved to the Lynchburg area in August of 1985, it's hard to believe it's been almost 40 years, I cannot be that old. The library had recently moved to this location at the Plaza. The building was formerly the home of the Sears Store before it moved to the new, at that time, River Ridge Mall. In fact, in a recent meeting with the library director just last Tuesday, she said that some older patrons at the library fondly recall where the lawnmowers and appliances were kept as they browsed the shelves looking for just the right book. Much has changed in our city over the last 40 years, some good, some bad, but our city grows and changes with the times. It should also be that way for our library. Instead, there have been very few updates to a building that was built and only meant to be a department store and never a public library. I want you to imagine, if you will, inviting a large group of people to your home for an event. Fifty of your closest friends are having a party at your house, and everyone is having fun, but then it starts to rain, and now everyone has to squeeze inside. Soon, everyone learns something that you knew, but you can't afford to fix. You have a very leaky roof. Fifty people inside your home also means that your bathrooms are now over capacity and your toilets have also overflowed. While this is happening, you also have a water pipe that is now burst in your kitchen. Horrified, you can only apologize profusely as guests feast a hasty retreat to their vehicles. Thoroughly embarrassed, you hear guests mutter that they won't be back to your house, no matter how great the food is. Now, this may have been something from out of a nightmare, but for the staff at the Lynchburg Public Library, it is a reality that happens much too often. Between the two branches, there's an average of 465 people that visit per day. In addition, at the main branch alone last year, 6,398 youth attended the summer program and 486 participated in the summer reading program. At a time where high school students are reading on a second grade level, we should be encouraging this program. There are over 16,900 computer sessions where citizens who are trying to better themselves. Over 1,400 students attended the library's lunch program. When we have over 21% of our children who are living in poverty, programs like this are essential, but yet some of you just simply don't care. I wonder if your child had to attend lunch program or not have anything to eat that day, would you change your mind? Investment in the renovation of our library is a unifying, common sense consideration for council. Investing taxpayer dollars in the renovation of our library is a strategic economic decision that yields substantial, long-term benefits for the community. We also believe that safe, attractive, modernized public spaces and resources are crucial to the vibrancy and thriving of our population and promotes community growth. As we continue to live, work, and play in Lynchburg, we must strive to attract others who also want to do so. In order to do this, we must have excellent, state-of-the-art services and spaces to accomplish future growth. Modernized library facilities attract more visitors, support workforce development by having access to technology and job resources while connecting citizens to critical community services in a cost-efficient way. You all have talked about how our schools need to do better in teaching our children. We know that there is a literacy problem among our kids. Research consistently shows that early literacy and exposure to books are predictors of academic success. Libraries also help to bridge the gap by offering resources that reinforce learning outside the classroom. They provide safe, structured spaces for students to study, complete homework, and engage in STEM or literacy programs that complement curriculum. When we invest in our local libraries, it's not just about providing building improvements to a 40-year-old building, it's about creating opportunities for our city's children to succeed, strengthen the workforce, and provide a sound economic future for our community. Our children, as I have always said, are the future leaders of this city. Will you do what you know to be right by investing in their future now, or will they be made to pay the price literally for your failure?
Thank you. The next is David Levy with Woodland Neighborhood, followed by Ben Copeland, representing Lynchburg City Schools, Jim Quattlebaum, and Peter Sepharati.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Council, thank you for letting me speak even at this late hour. I'm going to be very brief. I was asked by my neighbors and by several of my neighbors and business owners on Bedford Avenue to speak to the capital improvement plan, 1.4 million, for improvement of the streetscape and sidewalks on Bedford Avenue. You know the area, you know what an amazing revival of Bedford Avenue has been. I came to Lynchburg in 1978, and Bedford Avenue was not a place you wanted to be back in 1978. Now, it is delightful, and we go there frequently because there are wonderful restaurants and businesses right there. And we know people on Bedford Avenue. The church that has taken over the Gospel Community Church at the end of Rivermont is a very populated church now. It's really a revival, and the city needs to, as part of its continued reinvestment in the city, in the infrastructure of the city, keep that 1.4 million dollars in the capital improvement plan for Bedford Avenue. Thank you very much.
Next is Dr. Ben Copeland, representing Lynchburg City Schools, followed by Jim Quattlebaum, Peter Sepharati, and Michael Bremer.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Dr. Ben Copeland, interim superintendent for Lynchburg City Schools. I always start my talks like this, reminding everybody that an adequately funded public school division is a cornerstone institution for this city. Much of my time over the past six months has been focused on the financial needs of Lynchburg City Schools so we can restart the engine and continue to move forward. Amongst all the talk and discussion, it's important to remember, the education of children, the education of children is our primary mission. City manager's budget proposes $2.71 million increase to the city's portion of the school's operating budget and is a significant step in the right direction. Although it falls short of the full request of 5.5 million, it brings the funding level to the highest point it has been in the past five years. Additionally, the city manager's budget provides $68 million in capital improvement funding over the next five years that is desperately needed. But more importantly, it provides $10.95 million in the FY26 budget, the largest infusion of capital improvement funds since Heritage High School was completed in 2015. This budget is critical to attracting and retaining a capable workforce. The city's portion of this budget, combined with the state funding and other federal funding we get, will ensure that we can provide a 3% pay raise for employees, ensures that we can provide the step increases for those longevity pay raises, milestones. It will move Lynchburg City Schools to a $17 an hour minimum wage, an increase from 15, which is significant in this high inflation environment. It will provide a $50,000 a year starting teacher salary. It provides adequate funding for ever-increasing health insurance costs and other benefits for employees. At the lowest level of this funding, it will provide 16 building-level substitutes so that a principal has a substitute teacher at their disposal every day of the year and isn't reliant on volunteer substitutes to fill gaps. And it provides 10 critical bus aids to help our students as they transit to and from school to ensure that our bus drivers can focus on driving the bus and not dealing with behaviors that are happening behind them. All of this ensures that Lynchburg City Schools stays competitive in the central Virginia employment market. If you haven't heard, there are fewer and fewer teachers graduating from colleges and universities, therefore, everybody is vying for the same candidates. So in conclusion, I support the city manager's budget at the current tax rate. But I do want to close with something. There was a great Secretary of State and retired General Colin Powell. He coined a phrase, perpetual optimism is a force multiplier. As Lynchburg City Schools has not received any significant additional funding from the city in recent years, this budget fuels optimism and reinforces that things will improve and that the future may be brighter, even in these challenging situations. I waited over two hours for my five minutes to talk to this group. And this was a budget hearing and two other hearings. I am disappointed that the hearing, the public, and you still have a lot of people left to hear from here, that we had to sit here while y'all talked about what you need to talk about. This night is about you hearing from the people about what they think is important for your budgets. I appreciate my opportunity to share my thoughts as the interim superintendent for Lynchburg City Schools. I hope that you will keep the tax rate where it is so that the city manager's budget and the support for schools can go forward, because I am concerned that if you go to the lower tax rate, something is going to give, and historically, that's been schools. Thank you.
Next is Jim Quattlebaum, followed by Peter Sepharati, Michael Bremer, then Megan Cruz, representing Friends of the Library.
Good evening, councilmen and women. My issue tonight is that of a timing on the budget. You guys are going to decide on a rate, and the money's going to start flowing in, and decisions are going to be made, okay? I'm saying that when this money flows in and we start spending money, that we pause and think about how much we're spending on each of these items. Let's take another look. Let's take another look at the pool, let's take another look at the library, very important. I know there's a lot of people, it's very important to them. The library needs fixing, yes, it does, but do we need to spend however many millions of dollars at once on it? Can we not pause and think about what kind of money we're spending and when? Let's say that we may have money left over. There's nothing to say we've got to spend it all. Let's have some reserve money. Let's wait. The timing is not good right now. The economy just went through four years of just torture. The economy's in the toilet. And now, to add to that, President Trump is resetting the global economy right now. People are panicking. I don't know, I've made a study of watching people in public. There's a look of panic on the faces right now. It's terrible. You look at the mothers in the grocery line with their list, they're holding that list and they're looking at the items. They've got a trailer, three kids behind them. They're making hard decisions on what's going to be purchased on that list. Look at the father that comes home from work. He's got duct tape on his boots. The same duct tape is bandaging his finger from working so hard. We're in a lot of stress. We need to pause and think about how we're spending the money, and we need to slow it down a little bit. And that's my point. Thank you.
Next is Peter Sepharati, followed by Michael Bremer, then Megan Cruz with Friends of the Library, then Eric Nygaard, representing Lynchburg City Schools Education Foundation.
I'd like to point out, I'm Peter Sepharati, Ward One. I'd like to point out that I am speaking on behalf of the Lynchburg City elders. I'd like to point out that I am speaking on behalf of the Lynchburg City elders. Thank you. Again, I want to commend you folks for dealing with this thing. The fact that the city has to go through this every year is, you can have it. So, I said before earlier, our fiscal stress, a lot of it's due to, a lot of spending ends up in the budget that's for wants and have lower priorities than the city's needs. And this is a recurring pattern, and it also leads to people, we have surpluses at the end. Now, I know some of them are budgeted surpluses for an emergency fund, but it seems like always the round of reserves is bigger than the budgeted reserve fund. So, that money goes someplace. And, you know, people are talking about the library and the pools and the schools, but one of the joint City Council School Board meetings, a question was asked by a member of the school board, is why did you put nine, or whatever it was, and $10 billion, million dollars, whatever it was, into this amphitheater downtown when you could have been working on the schools with the same dollars? Where's the judgment? Where's the good judgment? Where's the wisdom? How has this new budget been promoted to us? Now, I want to give you a couple examples. In the Budget and Brews meeting that I went to, the budget was promoted, the budget promoted, funding for Miller Park Pool and the library needs, the main library needs. The pool leaks, right. The library plumbing and HVAC are shot, right. The roof leaks. These sound like real needs that ought to be addressed. However, a concept for the pool project has been revealed recently, which includes rebuilding and expanding the whole complex. What's that all about? That's $10 million. What's that? Why, where does that come from? Nobody told me about that when, at the Budget and Brews thing. Last week, library spokesperson on WLNI said the library was going to get an expanded footprint, which means any more square footage, additional interior spaces are to be rearranged and expanded. That means architects, engineers, expensive new materials, et cetera. And on top of that, she scoffed at the idea that the books on the racks would be approved by the citizens who have to pay, be paying for all this stuff. Someplace, I can hear somebody saying, "Bend over, man." $12.4 million, or whatever the number is. I was told that we needed plumbing work, bathroom work, drain work, and that the roof needed to be repaired. And now we're like, what, tearing it down, rebuilding the whole darn thing? Why are these major spending entities being snuck under the budget radar? We citizens should be fully informed about what the budget really includes. These projects really should be pared down to the scale of what was proposed to the public. And let me just say that I think that the school has major needs, dire needs, and the kids need to have safe, well-lighted and good environment for learning, yes. The monies, I mean, our operating budget doesn't count, you know, we're going to bond pay for all this stuff. We're not paying for that at our operating funds, so it's going to happen, I guess, one way or the other. But I hope that someplace in planning, or city management, or city council, somebody's thinking about futuristically. Are there futurists right now that are talking about what education's going to look like three to five years from now with AI? Are people going to be sitting in small areas in their neighborhood with individualized education for everybody delivered by AI? Are school buildings going to be empty because they're not needed anymore, because they can't keep up with the standards that people get individually from AI? Are you guys thinking about that? You really need to be thinking a little bit ahead, because things are changing fast in this country, this whole world. So, you know, you've got to get with it if you're going to be doing this job. I'd just like to say that Chairman, Councilman Wilder, I appreciate your view on things, and I appreciate how appreciative you are for everybody, and you thank them for everything. Once in a while, I'd like to hear you thank the taxpayers. Thank you. Good night.
Next is Michael Bremer, but I don't think I see him in the crowd. Okay. So, we'll go with Megan Cruz, representing Friends of the Library, followed by Eric Nygaard, representing Lynchburg City Schools Education Foundation, then Teresa Brennan, then Joanne Martin, representing NAACP.
All right. Good evening, Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor. My name is Megan Fallen. I am a resident of Ward One, and I am very proud to be here tonight to speak on behalf of the Friends of the Lynchburg Public Library. Thank you for the opportunity to offer public comment on this year's proposed budget. I want to express strong support for the public library renovation and the capital improvement plan. I'm also sharing some love from some of the city's youngest residents and avid library patrons. And for the gallery, you can see in the back, if you want to see what council is looking at, that is what they're looking at, some drawings, some really cute and fun drawings from library patrons. The proposed renovation of the Lynchburg Public Library is a long overdue investment in a space that belongs to all of us. The plan will modernize the building, improve accessibility and energy efficiency, and create dedicated areas for library activities. It will ensure that our library remains a relevant, welcoming, and equitable space for generations to come. Ongoing repairs and inefficiencies are a drain on city resources. The proposed renovation is a smart capital investment that will reduce long-term maintenance costs, improve energy efficiency, and bring the facility up to modern standards. It is about getting ahead of the cost curve and avoiding more expensive fixes down the line. Libraries are one of the few places in any city that are truly open to all, regardless of age, income, background, or circumstance. We believe this renovation is not only responsible, but it reflects the values of our city. Libraries particularly support the needs of some of our most marginalized citizens, those who are unemployed, retired, searching for a job, as well as those living with a disability, and internet users who lack home internet access. Those who need a helping hand find it in our library and the services it offers to the community. Libraries are not a luxury. They are essential infrastructure that supports economic mobility, education, and civic responsibility. As you have heard in chamber, every $1 invested in public libraries yields roughly $4 to $5 in economic return. In Lynchburg, the public library had nearly 200,000 physical and digital checkouts last year, and over 12,000 people attended free library programs, including job training, youth reading programs, and technology support. Nearly 30% of Lynchburg households don't have broadband at home. The library fills that gap, leveling the playing field for students, workers, and veterans. A recent study found that students who visited the library weekly were 66 times more likely to graduate from high school. These are not abstract benefits. They are direct services to residents trying to get back on their feet, children building literacy, and seniors staying connected. The library provides access, not handouts. It is a place for self-improvement, not dependency. At the Friends of the Library, we believe in smart spending, strong communities, and high-impact public services. These aren't just budget lines. They're investments in the foundation of a strong, self-reliant Lynchburg. We respectfully urge you to support the capital improvement plan funding the library. And I'd also invite, I have other board members and other supporters in this room, so I'd like to ask those in the gallery to stand if you support a healthy and thriving library in Lynchburg. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your leadership.
Up next, we have Eric Nygaard, representing Lynchburg City Schools Education Foundation, followed by Teresa Brennan, Joanne Martin, representing the NAACP, and then Molly McLennan.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for listening to the public this evening. My name is Eric Nygaard. I'm a Lynchburg, Virginia native, born and raised here, lived in Lynchburg for 33 years, product of Lynchburg City Schools. And I'm here speaking tonight as a member of the Lynchburg City Schools Education Foundation. The Education Foundation's been in existence for 40 years. Our sole mission is to advance the excellence and equity in Lynchburg City Schools through advocacy and education funding. I'm here to speak on behalf of the budget that you guys have in front of you for the city schools, as well as the capital improvement plan for the city schools themselves, as well as the Miller Park Pool and the library. Together, the schools, Miller Park Pool, and the library represent an ecosystem and an investment that the city is making from current taxpayers to future taxpayers, both taxpayers that are not paying their taxes yet in the form of children, as well as those that use the services regularly for which we pay. The capital improvement plan and budget shows that the city is optimistic about its future. It shows that we are taking what we are getting today and putting forward to make sure that we have buildings that are going to be what we want for our children so they can be proud of the places they go to school. I currently have one child in the public school system, two more that are going to be there in the next couple of years, and a pool that doesn't leak in Miller Park for those residents that choose to use that pool, and a library that allows someone like me as a parent to not have to buy all 20 Wings of Fire book for my eight-year-old, who is voracious for reading through the books that the public library has available to him and his peers. So, thank you very much for the time. Appreciate you listening to the citizens tonight.
Up next is Teresa Brennan, followed by Joanne Martin, representing the NAACP, followed by Molly McLennan, then Paul Key. It's Teresa Brennan. I don't see. Okay. Okay. So, Joanne Martin, representing the NAACP, followed by Molly McLennan, Paul Key, and Greg Berry.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember, city staff. My name is Joanne Martin. I'm a Ward Two resident and president of the Lynchburg NAACP, Unit 7088. I want to start off by saying I agree with Dr. Copeland. He said two hours, I've been here since 5:00, and I think it's disrespectful to the members of the community that came out and said it was a public hearing, and instead of, we heard a lot of portification from council members. I'm speaking tonight not only as a concerned resident, but as a representative of a community that stands to bear the brunt of proposed budget cuts, our black and brown neighbors, families, and children. Let's be clear, most of the proposed cuts disproportionately impact these communities, those already navigating systemic challenges. We cannot claim to be a city committed to serving all citizens while slashing services and support where they are most needed. The proposed budget is responsibly built on a real estate tax rate of 89 cents. Any reduction in that rate doesn't just tighten the belt, it guts the budget and the first casualties, city workers, many whom are the backbone of our services, public safety employees, sanitation workers, and those keeping our infrastructure running. The 3% cost of living adjustment, improved healthcare options, and pay progression for our public safety employees are not luxuries. They are basic commitments to those who serve this city every day. I understand the desire to reduce the tax burden on Lynchburg residents. As a homeowner, I'm no different than most of those who spoke tonight, because my real estate taxes will also increase. But I also understand, as Oliver Wendell Holmes once said, "Taxes are the price we pay for a civilized society." Let's talk about quality of life. The only public pool in Lynchburg, serving thousands of children, is long due for improvements. That pool is not just recreation, it's safety, it's equity, and for many families, it's the only accessible place for their kids to swim. The public library, again, long overdue for renovations, is more than a building full of books. It is a lifeline for job seekers, students, and seniors, many of whom don't have internet access or a quiet place to work or study. To put that off again is to delay progress for thousands. And finally, and perhaps most importantly, our public schools. Lynchburg City Schools rank 12th out of 14th in per people funding in our region. That is unacceptable. Our children deserve better, especially when we know an education is one of the most powerful tools we have to break the cycles of poverty. So, I ask you, if not now, when? If not with this budget, then with what? Cutting the tax rate may feel good politically, but the long-term cost will be paid in reduced services, diminished opportunities, and deeper disparities. Please do not balance the budget on the backs of the most vulnerable. The time is long past for political dogma in fighting, caring only for those who look like you do, think as you do, or even vote like you do. General Douglas MacArthur once said that a true leader has the confidence to stand alone, the courage to make tough decisions, and the compassion to listen to the needs of others. He does not set out to be a leader, but becomes one by the quality of his actions and the integrity of his intent. Please invest the full promise of this city for all its people. In closing, I believe, as I heard some of you mention, some of the citizens tonight talk about looking at different ways of doing things and innovations, I would suggest you hold a bake sale to pay for the street improvements in Whittington Road.
Next up is Molly McLennan, followed by Paul Key, Greg Berry, and Desmond Mosby.
Good evening. I'm Molly McLennan from Ward One, and I'm here to urge you to accept, pass the budget as it is presented, and I know that includes an increase in taxes that I'm willing to pay for. The budget, your budget has also included plans for the city schools, $60 million for the capital improvement plan, at $10,000 this year, $30,000 the next, and then $20,000. And that plan is made that way so that planning and design work can be done, and that the money for construction will then come when construction is ready. So, I urge you to continue to that plan. That also leaves money to support the library and the Miller Pool, both of which are important. I came to this city almost 60 years ago. I came because my husband and I had a job, and I was going to make this city my home, and I was going to do the best I could. There was no Blackwater Creek. The bridge down by Hollins Mill was a railroad trestle, and walking in on it was trespassing. The same was true for Percival's Island. I have seen those things come about in Peaksview Park and Ivy Creek Park, and that came about because council was looking forward towards the future. I am a citizen of Lynchburg, and I am proud of Lynchburg now. And I hear people say, "I looked other places, and I chose to live in Lynchburg." It's a nice city. I would like to continue that momentum and make, keep Lynchburg a place that looks to the future and builds well, and not compromise and shrink back and get close. So, I urge you to pass the budget and to keep our taxes like they are. Thank you.
Next is Paul Key, followed by Greg Berry, Desmond Mosby, Andrea Hurt.
Good evening. My name is Paul Key. I am a resident in Ward One. I want to kind of paraphrase a couple of statements. Invest in our youth in the way that they should go, and where there is no vision, our youth will perish. Compromising education budget can harm students' outcomes, limit future opportunities, and hinder societal progress. Adequate funding is crucial for providing quality education, ensuring access to resources, and preparing students for a competitive global economy. Cutting education funds disproportionately affects students with disabilities, low income, students and those in under-resourced communities. Here's why compromising education budgets is a bad Here's why compromising education budgets is a bad idea. The students' outcomes, reduced academic performance, insufficient funding can lead to larger class sizes, fewer resources, and less experienced teachers, ultimately impacting student achievement. Widening achievement gaps, funding disparities between districts or communities exacerbates inequity, creating a cycle where under-resourced schools struggle to close achievement gaps, limited educational opportunities. Students may miss out when crucial resources like advanced classes, technology, and support services hinder their potential. Future opportunities reduce job prospects. A well-funded education system is essential for preparing students for the workforce and ensuring that they have skills needed for future careers. Limited access to higher education budget cut can impact funding for higher education, making it harder for students to afford access to college and university programs. Reduce economic growth. A poorly educated workforce can stiffer economic growth and innovation, making a nation or community less competitive in the global community market. Societal impact, increase poverty and inequality. Limited educational resources, reduce social mobilization, or lack of access to quality education, weaken democracy, an educational system that is essential to being healthy. All of my kids have come through the schools and matriculated through college. Even my wife and I have gone to local universities. We must have a heart for youth and development and education. If a person lacks wisdom, they need to add, and there are places that they can get it, and they should be able to get it in Lynchburg, Georgia. Thank you.
Next is Greg Berry, who I think may have left. Yes. Desmond Mosby, followed by Andrea Hurt, then Carl Luce, representing Lynchburg Education Association, and Joanna Darrenbacker.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Desmond Mosby, and I'm a resident of Ward Two, a father of three, and a proud product of Lynchburg City Schools. Tonight, I want to first offer my thanks to this council for making education a priority in public conversation, and to City Manager Winter Bender and his team for crafting a budget that reflects that commitment through a proposed 2.5 million increase to the school division's operating budget. That step forward matters. It reflects responsiveness. It acknowledges the rising needs in our schools and the pressure facing our educators, administrators, and students. But as I read over the published budget priorities, I was struck, truly moved by a line that came directly from you. The development and continued support of a strong public school system is critical to any city's long-term success. Outstanding public schools and lifelong learning opportunities attract people to our community, improve long-term well-being, and create an environment dedicated to excellence. I believe in those words. I've lived those words as a student who made it because this community invested in me, and I'm raising children who now walk the same hallways I once did. So, tonight, I'm not here with a list of demands. I'm here with one word: encouragement. Encouragement to continue walking the path you've already started, because while the 2.5 million increase is significant, we also know that the school division requested 5.5 million. That remaining 2.8 million isn't just a number, it's the unmet cost of ensuring schools can function at the level our students deserve. And I recognize we can't always do everything at once, but we can commit to momentum. We can say if more becomes available, we'll be ready to invest it where it matters most. We can keep the door open. You've already shown the intention, and I'm asking you tonight that you continue honoring that intention. Thank you so very much.
Next is Andrea Hurt, followed by Carl Luce, representing Lynchburg Education Association, then Joanna Darrenbacker, Beverly McCloskey.
This is getting to be a bad habit here, three times in one night. Andrea Hurt, Ward Two. Just because you can doesn't mean you should. Something my father said to me, which I still sometimes ponder about. He was a very smart man, and he liked to speak to me and riddles to me and try and figure out. If only we could live as well as we do. And I go, "What does that really mean?" Well, look at our $36 trillion budget at the federal level. We're smaller than the federal budget, but we're doing the same thing. We need a group to be formed of some kind to do something comparable to DOGE, to root out the waste, fraud, and abuse that is happening within the city. With a little bit of detective work, I found some things that were very small but really, really impacted me. We need to do that. Secondly, we need to also do a detailed audit. The city hasn't been audited in over twenty years. That should, that should really upset everybody here. If you don't have an audit and you don't know where your money's going, what does that tell you? They're hiding stuff from us. So, we need to do that before we go and expend these capital. And I haven't dug down on the whole budget. I don't have the time. But I do know the ten and twelve million dollars, like Larry found out, that that parking garage didn't have to cost, how many million? Six hundred some thousand, okay? Why can't we find the same things for the pool and the thing? Find creative solutions to this. We don't have the money to waste on this stuff. City Council is a source of the power in this city. The city council members are elected. The city manager, who is not elected, is not the center of power in the city. He works for city council. And I would just like to remind that because I'm hearing things that seem to be the other way around. That needs to be corrected. We need to promote a group to analyze this waste, fraud, and abuse, and then pass this along to city council as to ways for us to save money on all fronts, which will benefit all citizens, all of us, and make us have some trust in our government again. My trust in the government, any kind, is pretty well shot. We should have, we should not have across-the-board raise for city employees. It should be based on merit. Why should someone who does their job diligently get a raise, and someone who sits filing his or her nails or whatever on city time get the same raise? I've heard city employees tell me that. They don't like that, and I can understand. Also, I think a lot of city employees do not live in the city. So, why, they don't have any skin in the game if they're going to create a project, a little pet project they want to do, and spend taxpayer money which shouldn't be spent. So, I strongly recommend that these requests be, and creative solutions to our promise be adopted.
Thank you.
Next up is Carl Luce, representing the Lynchburg Education Association, then Joanna Darrenbacker, Beverly McCloskey, and Colleen Larkins, representing Save Our Schools.
All right. It's late. You're tired. I'm tired, so I'm definitely not going to take all five of those minutes. I think half of you have made up your mind already anyway, so good evening to all of you. Yeah, it's still evening. And thank you so much for your service to the greater Lynchburg community. My name is Carl Luce, and I'm President of Lynchburg Education Association. And seven years ago, I stood before the members of this group and reminded them that this council has more than one obligation. I understand that you have an obligation to the taxpayers of this great city, but you also have an obligation to the people you employ. You have an obligation to the children that are raised here. You have an obligation to the community that we can become with a strong school system. And right now, those obligations aren't being met. This council has seen fit in recent years to kowtow to a few wealthy landowners because if we are truly honest and transparent, that's who benefits from these tax cuts. It's not the average family who saves one hundred or two hundred dollars a year, although from what I'm hearing tonight, it's less than that, but loses service after service because of it. It's the handful of rich landlords owning hotels and apartment complexes all over the city. They are the ones who are reaping the rewards while the rest of us see fewer and fewer service available to us. Among them, schools that continue to do more with less. There's absolutely no reason not to fully fund the request made by Lynchburg City Schools, which is currently operating under local funding that is less than it was six years ago. Whenever we think back to the times where we have been most prosperous as a community, the parallel that we see every time is that the city council is adequately funding its schools. It's no secret that strong public schools contribute to the short and long-term economic health of a community. This council has an opportunity today to send a message to every potential business looking for the right community in which to grow that Lynchburg is a place that can make that happen. Lynchburg City Schools has given you a budget that shows we are serious about the growth of this community, investing $60 million over the next three years in school facilities, attracting and keeping talented educators by properly paying staff and support personnel a wage that makes us competitive with other localities, and increasing the support needed to keep our facilities and buildings running at optimal, optimal levels for maximum efficiency. You sit in these chairs week after week and face a lot of difficult and challenging problems. This isn't that. This one's easy. You have a very efficient and effective LCS budget presented to you. I ask that you fully fund it. Fund your kids, fund your community, fund your future, fund LCS. Thank you.
Next is Joanna Darrenbacker, followed by Beverly McCloskey, Colleen Larkins, representing Save Our Schools, then Erin Reed.
Hi, Joanna Darrenbacker, Ward One. Members of Lynchburg City Council, I have two children, one who's a sophomore at Heritage High School and one who's a seventh grader at Sandusky Middle School. They are thriving at Lynchburg City Schools, and under the leadership of some of what I think are their top educators and administrators. And while my children are incredibly fortunate enough to attend two of our schools newer, of our newer school buildings, I can't shake the stark reality that not all of Lynchburg's children learn in the same environment and the same sense of safety. Written in the hallway of Sandusky Middle School is a quote by Nelson Mandela, "Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world." But do we really believe that when we neglect the very school buildings that we use to educate? I've heard stories, and frankly, they're heartbreaking. Imagine an athlete full of passion and promise at Easty Glass High School trying to train on a track that is cracked and uneven, a surface that hinders their performance and poses a risk of injury. These aren't just lines on the ground to them. This is where their dreams are chased. This is where their discipline is learned, and where our young people push their limits. To deny them a safe and functional track is to tell them in a very real way that their aspirations are somewhat less important. And then I think of the students at Linkhorn Middle, who have, often have to learn in classrooms that are either too hot or too cold due to a broken and malfunctioning HVAC system. It's more than just a discomfort. It directly relates to their ability to focus and learn, and we're talking about children trying to absorb complex concepts when the heat doesn't work. And additionally, a Dunbar hallway can become quite crowded and difficult to navigate because some stairwells are unusable due to needed repairs. It's a stark contrast to the comfortable hallways my own children navigate in in their newer schools, and it makes me wonder why all of Lynchburg's children don't have the same basic comfort and ease in their learning environments. It's too easy to say this is just the way things are, and I refuse to accept that for the children of Lynchburg. Every single one of our students, regardless of what school they attend, deserves to learn and grow in a space that is safe, inspiring, and well-equipped. They deserve to feel the same sense of possibility. We are one city, one community, and the success of one child ultimately contributes to the success of us all. And when we allow some of our school buildings to fall into disrepair, we are not just neglecting bricks and mortar, but we are sending a message to those students that they are somehow less deserving. We are stifling their potential and undermining their sense of worth. The proposed capital plan of sixty million isn't just about fixing buildings. It's about investing in the dreams of every child in Lynchburg. It's about saying that we value their education, their safety, and their future equally. It's about ensuring that the athlete at Easty Glass can run with confidence, and that the student at Linkhorn and Dunbar can learn in a comfortable and safe environment. And the 5.5 million budget increase is just about providing the resources needed to support these students within those improved environments, smaller class sizes, more counselors, and the dedicated teachers they deserve. My children are fortunate, yes, but their good fortune should not come at the expense of the other children in the city. Thank you.
Next is Beverly McCloskey, followed by Colleen Larkins, representing Save Our Schools, and Erin Reed.
My name is Beverly McCloskey, and I'll be speaking on behalf of Embrace Our Schools for the third time of April and May, three years in a row. It feels like Groundhog Day. I'm shaking. I'm so frustrated with their new members, and I'm so frustrated. I watched, I'm a full-time, I have a full-time job, I have four kids. I would like to be, have watched the game at Heritage versus Glass, Varsity Girls tonight, but my daughter knows that this is important, so I'm here. And I'm not tucking them into bed tonight because I'm here, and I didn't cook their dinner tonight, and this happens because I watch all of y'all's meetings. It's infuriating, all the school board meetings, all the, everything. And I have a full-time job, but I have to because I care about my kids, and I know they will thrive, but the kids in our community that I love, that are in poverty and doing the best they can with what they have, they don't have someone listening. I was hopeful, after I worked today and watched on two times speed the meeting you guys had with Tish Lowry and our superintendent, that maybe you guys are listening, maybe something really will happen with our schools, and maybe they understand it's very important and it's not a political gain, it's just, it's really important. I, I don't know. I'm hopeful. I'm shaking. And then I see that you guys want to go down. I'm not, I'm not, I'm smart. I'm not, I'm not going to go through, I don't, I'm not an Excel spreadsheet girl. I can take notes, but you're talking about reducing now, we're to equalize, to point seven six. I spoke here when it was a dollar twelve, and it went down to eighty-nine cents, and I got to watch in the schools and see what actually it impacted. I'm so mad. I hope that putting the feet of the fire, or whatever expressions, are really going to happen, that you really, really understand. And I'm with a group, so I still have two minutes. I haven't even read what I was going to read because it's not even that important, but you don't listen. But I will tell you that you appointed the school board, the majority appointed the current school board that you have right now. So, you should, if you're going to try to trust someone, you should trust that those are the people you selected, and they are asking for what is reasonable, and they have slashed the needs from their asks, and I think you should give them what more than they're asking. But funding education should not be bipartisan. It's, it's not political. It's our children. And the quote from our governor, on day one, "We're going to work hard. We're going to restore excellence in our schools. That includes rolling out the largest education budget in the Commonwealth's history. There will be an investment in teachers' schools and special education." The governor, that the majority of elected believes in funding our schools. He understands the quality of school and a direct reflection of the community, and understands that strong schools attract families and businesses to this community. I'm a small business owner. Do you guys understand how it works? If you don't have good schools, no one wants to live here. No one's going to work here. You're not going to have capital coming in here. You have to understand, you have to have, that should be the bedrock of this city, is strong schools. I grew up in one public school, great community. Nobody did private. Why would you? That could be this, that was this, until you stopped funding it. And the president, the majority of you elected, he believes that you also need to make strong investments for future growth. He's making changes to do that now. You got to do that, too. If you have to not get your point seven six, whatever. People are going to hurt. People are already hurting. It's our children. They need to have that opportunity. So, just fund, fully fund it, at least fully fund it, because you haven't done it, whatever, whatever you want to say. You haven't done it for years.
Next up, Colleen Larkins with Save Our Schools, followed by Erin Reed.
Colleen-
Colleen Larkins, Save Our Schools. I have now been here for six hours, or for four hours and twenty minutes. I have to say, I find it extremely disingenuous for those of you who wanted to pause the public hearing without hearing us. You kept talking about how many people you had heard from, but there was a whole list of people who had yet to speak, so therefore we don't matter. Therefore, what we have to say, once again, these two gentlemen trying to silence myself and others from being able to speak, we had to wait here for almost an hour while you discuss things instead of being able, as the public, to be heard in a public setting. This night is for us to be heard, not for you to grandstand. Mayor Taylor, thank you for stopping that and for moving things along and allowing us to be heard. I truly appreciate that. Here I find myself again, asking for funds for Lynchburg City Schools. I've read through every single piece of the budget and CIP plan. It's riveting. As the other mom expressed, I have a full-time job and also a side gig and also two kids. This is not what I want to be doing with my time. But if we don't do it, who will? Who will do this? Who will advocate for our babies? I will say I am privileged to have the time to do that, but many parents do not. Many parents have to work two jobs. Many parents don't have a clue what's going on in this building or in the building across the street. They simply don't have that luxury. And so I stand there advocating for my kids, but for their kids too. If we continue to cut our education, what will happen? As I turned every page of the CIP plan, I thought to myself, on every page, is this as important as our students? Is this as important as our schools? And then I kept coming back to one group of people that no one really talks about or asks about, but is it as important as our teachers? Year after year after year, they are told, next year, next year, your building won't have mold in it. Next year, you won't have mice in your room. Next year, your room won't be sweltering in the winter and freezing in the summer. Next year, you'll get a raise. Next year. Next year never comes. It never comes. This is the year. Our teachers, last year when the budget stayed even, they got hit the hardest. They got twenty percent health insurance increase, twenty percent, without raises. They're some of the most underpaid teachers in our entire area. They are constantly overlooked, they're asked for more and are given less. Now is the time to give the teachers what they need. If you want to fund instruction, which is what I hear you say all the time, you have to fund the people who do it. You have to do all the things that Dr. Copeland said. A building substitute means that a teacher can go to the doctor, they can attend their kids' events, they can do the things that they need to do. I think if you all sat and thought about a teacher who changed your life, you could probably materialize them. Mine was Mr. Duncan. I was a transfer from Arizona to Michigan, big culture shock, and he took me under his wing and helped me find a place. We all have those teachers that without them, we would not be who we are. They deserve the finances, they deserve the buildings, they deserve the raises. And in my last thirty seconds, I just want to say thank you to our city employees who take a lot of heat, a lot of heat. And if anything, being more involved has taught me how hard you all work and how much you take. So I just want to take this last few seconds and say thank you. Thank you for pouring into our city. Thank you for everything you do, from the emails to setting up today's meeting to everything. You guys truly are appreciated, even if it doesn't always show.
And last on our list is Erin Reed. Nope, okay, Erin has left.
Are there any voicemails?
I think there's a little bit more.
Oh, okay.
Last question, because I'm signing in the hallway, and I don't rely on the map.
I don't see you on here.
Well, we have, we have provision here. Anyone who have not spoke, that want to speak, can speak.
Hello again. I promise not to be angry this time. I want you to understand what it means to not have a public school. Like I said earlier, I grew up homeless. Later, we were able to move into a trailer, and after that, a mobile home, a mobile home that fell apart when my mother was trying to do the laundry, she fell through the floor. We grew up very poor, and I cannot emphasize that enough. We lived in an area that did not have a public school, something that is unheard of to most people. People take public schools as a given, but I grew up without one. My mother had to not only work full-time at night while my dad worked full-time during the day, but she also had to homeschool us, all four of us. Homeschooling children is a wonderful privilege to some people, but for us, it was a requirement in order for me to be educated. Now, I was able to become educated enough to get a scholarship to attend university, and that has made a big difference in my life, but it was because I had an educated mother who has a PhD in art history. That to make you understand what you are risking when you do not fund schools is you're destroying the futures of children. Without schools, they do not have the opportunities to get scholarships, they don't have opportunities for early intervention, they do not have opportunities of sports, they do not have the same social situations that other people take advantage of. I had to learn my social skills at a much later time in life than most people because it was just my siblings and I. There's so much that schools do for children, and the underfunding of teachers. My friend was a school teacher here in Lynchburg. He has moved to Roanoke because they pay him more. He could not live. He worked full-time as a teacher and worked as a bartender at night, and he could not afford his rent, so he moved. You guys lost a great teacher, and that's just the reality. It's the same with the libraries. Libraries give children opportunities that they would not have other access to. Books are so important. They are a gateway to understanding different concepts, and they are a gateway to imagination. You want creative people. There's a constant talk of find creative solutions. How can you find creative solutions without creative people? You need them, and if you don't grow their minds, then we will continue with this illiteracy rate, and we will continue to struggle to grow our city. Children need to be the number one priority, no matter which side of the aisle you are on, no matter which political belief, no matter what your religion is, no matter what your race is, nothing else matters than making sure our kids have a better future than what we had. Thank you.
City Council, Josh Eager, Ward One. I support the proposed budget at the eighty-nine cent tax rates. I'm a mechanical engineer, I deal with deferred maintenance every day. Before I came here, I worked in paper mills, I saw what deferred maintenance did with my own eyes. The longer you defer maintenance, the more it costs, that's full stop, nothing changes. The sooner you do the maintenance, the less it costs. So if you defer the maintenance on the schools, if you defer the maintenance on the library, it will cost more. Fund it now, do it this year, and it will be cheaper. If you wait, it will only get more expensive. We cannot wait for the economy to get better, we cannot wait for people to be more in favor of it, we cannot wait for something else to happen, it has to happen this year. I'm young, I have a lot of years to pay taxes. You, City Council, can get those taxes, but only if you improve the schools. If something drives me to leave Lynchburg, it will be the schools falling into greater disrepair. That is the thing that I am the most worried about. If I look at working here, working for Framatome, or going somewhere else and working for a different company, I have many job offers, I can't leave, and I am in a very lucky position. If you want me to stay, if you want me to pay taxes here, then improve the schools, and improve the schools so more people like me come here. That's the way Lynchburg gets better. That's the way that you can lower the tax rate, is if more people come here and pay taxes. Lowering the tax rate now with only this many people here and defunding the schools will not bring more people here. When I talk to my friends, that is what we are worried about. If we grow up, we have families, we have kids, and we have to send them to schools that are in disrepair, that do not have good classes, that do not have advanced curriculums, that disadvantage them from getting into good colleges, then we will leave, we will go somewhere else. So fund the schools, fund the libraries, make Lynchburg a better place to live.
Zach Melder, Ward One. I have a question I want to present to you all, and it could be because it's getting really late, I'm far past my bedtime, I haven't eaten dinner yet, I'm kind of getting hangry. Also, I downloaded the pamphlet that was handed out on my phone, so I'm getting old, my eyesight might not be that great anymore. But on the schedule for the budget, the hearing for the budget is supposed to be taking place on May thirteenth, and if memory serves me right, and it was a little hard to follow the conversation earlier, beg my pardon, it's great for TV though, I think you all voted to push the actual vote on whether we should decrease the tax rate to May thirteenth. So I'm no genius when it comes to a lot of things, that's my mom, but I don't think you can set a budget unless you first know how much the revenue is coming in to begin with, but if the budget hearing is supposed to take place the same day that you're supposed to set the tax rate, I think there might be a little confusion on how that will happen. And you guys did continually praise the city manager, and I'm sure he's really great. I just don't know if he's that great at creating a budget that quickly, so you guys may want to look at that conflict in the schedule over setting the tax rate and when the budget hearing happens. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Council members. My name is Cindy Capps, I am a native of Lynchburg, Virginia. I've lived here my entire life. I currently do not live inside the city limits, however, I do work inside the city limits, and I am an advocate for Lynchburg City Schools, Save Our Schools, and also volunteer and serve in other community groups throughout the area. I want to share just a couple of pieces of information with you tonight. Oddly enough, I didn't sign up to speak tonight. I know you all find that very shocking, because any opportunity that I get to address you, I take full advantage of. However, tonight, in my spirit, I felt that it was my time to sit and to be still, and I wanted to listen, and I did, and the more I listened, the more frustrated I got. So the Lord moved me to go ahead and share with you a little bit this evening. I want to encourage you to not only approve the CIP funding for our schools, but to keep the current schedule intact as well, without front-loading funds. Dr. Copeland has made it clear that the timeline there is necessary for proper planning, hiring contractors, obtaining permits, and following the other procedures, and changing that schedule could possibly lead to project delays and the possibility of forfeiting unused funds. That's the last thing we want to happen. We strongly encourage you to approve the full 5.5 million budget increase and make school infrastructure a top priority. Another opportunity that I've been blessed with is that I am a current class member of Leadership Lynchburg, and my team's project this year, for the last nine months rather, has uncovered some very unsettling statistics about students in Lynchburg. We found that forty-three percent of children in Lynchburg are not kindergarten-ready. When it's time for them to go to kindergarten, forty-three percent of our students are not ready. We also found that forty-seven percent of third graders in Lynchburg are not meeting the expected literacy rates, they're not hitting those literacy benchmarks. So it doesn't make a lot of sense to me that the city would want to reduce or pull away any funding from our libraries. It sounds like our children need that now more than ever. The library, as well as a safe public pool, are very much-needed amenities for the citizens in our city, and they should be fully funded. I would encourage you to make that happen.
Thank you.
My name is Emily Kelly, and I have been an educator for eighteen years, and I have been here in Lynchburg City Schools for eight years. I'd like to shed some light on the reality behind teacher salaries, specifically the math that many people don't really see. In our district, teachers receive step raises only every other year. When we do receive them, it's just a three percent increase, meaning that averaged annually we're receiving only about one point five percent raise each year. To put this into context, the national average of inflation rate over the last few years has consistently exceeded the one point five percent, meaning that in real dollars, our salaries are not keeping up. And in essence, we're being asked to do more with less every year. Meanwhile, surrounding districts offer more competitive salary schedules or annual step increases. This disparity makes it harder for Lynchburg to attract and retain quality teachers, especially when talented teachers could drive just thirty minutes down the road and make more money. New teachers in LCS make about forty-nine thousand dollars a year. This is my eighteenth year teaching, I make six thousand dollars more than a brand-new teacher. Beyond financial impact, this has real effects on morale. It is disheartening to feel like your hard work, experience, and dedication aren't being properly valued. When educators feel undervalued, it leads to burnout, higher teacher turnover, and ultimately, the effects of inconsistent education for our students in Lynchburg. We are not asking for a luxury. We are asking for fairness, sustainability, and the recognition of the essential work that we do every day with the children in this city. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor. My name is Selena Morgan, I am from Ward One, and I will be representing a group, the Young Women's Empowerment Academy. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I come before you not just as a concerned resident, but as someone who believes deeply in the city and the people who make it what it is, our children, our educators, our city employees, and our neighbors. I am here to strongly urge you to not remove the 2.5 million increase to Lynchburg City Schools funding, do not eliminate pay raises to our city employees, and do not touch and not support our public libraries and/or our, and, I'm sorry, not or, and our funding for the Miller Park Pool. Because this is more than a budget conversation, this is a conversation about our values, our priorities, the kind of city we want Lynchburg to be. When we invest in Lynchburg City Schools, we're doing more than funding our teachers. We are investing in our future. Every child in our city deserves access to a quality education. Every family deserves to know that their city stands behind them. That 2.5 million, though it is not all, isn't just a number, it represents the opportunity, the safety, the long-term growth. Our students are unique and cannot be compared to other cities. As a program director, as a small business owner, I can tell you, we have three chapters in the Young Women's Empowerment Academy, and not what fits for any of them, Buffalo, New York, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, Lynchburg, Virginia. None of those all have the same demographics as far as what our children's needs are, what their family needs are, and what the makeup consists of. Because our community needs are different, hear me today, this isn't politics, this is facts, and if we're going to make it about, if we're going to make it, it needs to be made a point to understand, we have to meet the needs of our community. When we support our city employees by recognizing their hard work with fair inconsistent raises, we send a clear message that the people who serve and protect Lynchburg are valued. These are workers who plow our streets, collect our trash, run our emergency services, maintain our parks, ensure our families receive their monthly benefits, and so much more. If we want to keep the best, we must treat them like the best. And let us not forget the role of our public libraries and community resources like Miller Park Pool. These are- These are not luxuries. They are essential. The Lynchburg Public Library is a pillar for access, learning, and connection. Miller Park Pool isn't just a swimming spot. It's a safe haven in the summer, a community gathering place, and a place where equity is practiced in real time. Pulling funding from these spaces pulls community away from the people who need it most. A city budget is a moral document. It shows what we believe. What do we represent? What do we stand for? Lynchburg will be a city that says, "We believe in our children. We believe in our workers. We believe in public spaces that bring us together. We believe in building, not cutting. Our way in a brighter future." We have the opportunity right now to do what is right, not just what is easy. I urge you to protect and maintain these essential investments. Let's make sure that Lynchburg continues to grow into a city where everyone has a chance to thrive. Let me make these statements this evening. To know that you were going to shut us down and not allow the voices to be heard is disappointing. What I want to communicate is, just because a fanfare showed up today to support does not mean that that represents our entire city. Over 49% of our 79,000 population receives public assistance, which means quite a bit of them rely heavily on the services that are provided by this city. Our tax dollars matter. I have seven children. I work a full-time job. I run a small business, and I have a nonprofit. And I show up and I bust my butt in this city. And if that means I pay more taxes, cool. Because guess what? Those babies out there, they need us. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Kathleen Davis, Ward 2. And me and Cindy both said we weren't talking tonight. But tonight happened, so here we are. So tonight, we've heard a lot about politics, about duties to your parties and whatnot. But it is not partisan to care about kids in our community of all financial backgrounds. And it is not partisan to care that all these kids have access to summer fun at the pool. It is not partisan to know our community benefits immensely from public programming for children and families at the library. And anyone who is trying to convince you that those things are partisan, those people are not for this community. These things are investments in our community, investments in our children, the future of this community, arguably the greatest investment that we can make. Privatizing these things will eliminate access for the least among us, and you know that. Privatizing these things will eliminate access to the least among us, and you know that. You will never regret a dollar that you spend on children in this community, and you will never regret a dollar that you invest in Lynchburg families. Please, invest in our children and invest in our families. You want to get these kids off these iPads? Don't take away the pool. You want to inspire kids to do things? Well, let them meet each other out at the library and do these programmings. Okay? This is not partisan. This is a community, and we need to make it stronger, not weaker. Thank you.
Hello. Jordan Nesbit, Ward 4. I'm going to join the line of people who were not going to speak tonight, but after seeing things, just feel compelled to. And so I have sat here, and we're at 19 months now that I've been regularly bouncing back and forth between here and the school board and dealing with this stuff. And I'm actually going to quote Dr. Mark Tinsley, which the majority of this council did just put on the school board this last year. And at the previous school board session, he said, "Perception is reality." And what happened here earlier with trying to do a motion, call for a vote on that rate before you heard half of the people at least that were going to speak tonight is really a disservice. And it just... I had to immediately fight back. That really almost solidified that I was not going to speak tonight, because again, I was faced with this thing of, they say they want to hear from us, but then their actions don't meet that. So what is the point of talking? Because who's really going to listen? And that is just so disheartening for me to know that 18 months later, I'm still experiencing that. And then also, I would be willing to bet that is why a huge number of people are not here tonight, because they feel, what is the point? They're not going to hear us. They're not going to listen. Their minds are already made up. I also want to say that with, you know, the whole point of that was, it was said that we heard from a large number of people that they don't want this, so I think we need to go ahead and vote on this. That's not what happened with the Wickington Road addition. You heard from a huge number of people, and yet you went the opposite way of what those people said. So I think it's only fair to hear out both sides and then make a judgment. I absolutely, fully support this budget as proposed. I am a taxpayer. My kids go to Lynchburg City Schools. I'm a full-time employee. I'm a manager at that job. I have a small business on the side that I do, and I have a whole list of other things that I'm involved in. And I also took on being in Citizens Academy this class right now. And I have learned through these meetings with these different departments how incredible it is what they do and how much citizens in this community don't know what goes on. And I fully believe every single part of that budget. Those people in those departments have done what they needed to do to present to the city manager and his team. They have done everything that they needed to do to present us with the best option that can put us in the right steps moving forward. A lot of these problems with the school, with Miller Park, with all these things, obviously, were not things that you guys did. That is, we've been saying this for 19 months. The can was kicked down the road. But now there's an opportunity for us as a city, for you as a council, to make the first right step going forward and set up success for the city going forward and put us on a much better path. And I just sincerely hope that you do that. And I'm going to also take these last few seconds to just thank the city staff and everyone else, and also the guy in the sound booth back there. If nobody knows, I'm sure he's miserable back there in that little hole by himself. Thank you.
Hi. I just, I wasn't going to speak either. But I was looking at what Zach talked about, and I am a little confused because I pulled it up and screenshotted it. It says the first reading is May 13th. And I thought the first reading is when you have the budget solidified. So I'm not sure if you're... And you guys know this. If there can be the motion brought to the table in a work session to change the rate. Can the budget be brought to the table in the work session? Because then the next official meeting is May 13th, when you actually read the budget that is already in place with whatever the tax rate is. So that, just want to point that out. Because I hope that as everyone wants to be heard, that everyone was taken into consideration. But while I'm here and have two minutes left, I do want to just say that I do believe that everyone up here cares about the children. And I think that there's, I have full faith that our city council is not trying to do anything against the children. And that I do believe that some things that we can do, maybe it's just a matter of perspective on taking care of the children. I do believe that councilman missions, your wife is a teacher, so you certainly wouldn't want to shortchange our instruction, instructional budget, and have kids in our city schools. So it is personal for you, and you're the only one up here with that at this school, well, Sterling. You have kids in the city schools, right? Foster kids. So I do trust that you guys are going to make the right decision on the schools and all of the other... And I did hear Councilmember Rody on WLNI, and he had some really good talking points about the schools and the pool and the library and priorities, and I appreciate that. But also, one of the things that we can do to make sure that our kids are taken care of is making sure their parents have the money to buy the food and pay for the childcare and not have to make a decision and not have to go wait in a food pantry line because their taxes are too high. That's another way that we can take care of our children. And leave in a city for them that's financially solvent because we're not continuing to blow the money out of the water and sending people fleeing to the suburbs because they don't want to pay the high taxes. Then we lose taxpayers, and that gives the opposite effect to our revenue, doesn't it? Thank you.
She was, sorry. Would you mind stating your name and residence? Sorry, Mr. Mayor, just to acknowledge her.
Veronica Bratton. Thank you. Ward 4.
Jan Willinger, Ward 1. I'll be very brief. Please accept the budget that your city manager proposed. Do what's right for the kids. Do what's right for all of the citizens, especially the 50% that aren't fortunate enough to be homeowners. Please don't cut our budget and then reply, "Oops, we don't have enough money for the schools," or anything else. Because that's what happens when you don't go with an acceptable tax rate. Thank you.
I'd like to remind everybody, this city council has been... It has the other party for many, many years. And I know buildings do not deteriorate, you know, in two, three years. And I think it's very unfortunate that you all have been given this situation that was not taken care of many, many years ago, or at least the maintenance. Mr. Taylor, I'm sure you could appreciate that. I'm talking about maintenance. And I don't want you all to get blamed, no matter what you decide, but this is atrocious. Where were these people? Where were these people over the years when they were deteriorating? You know, it's just like, all of a sudden, these miracles happen and everything's falling apart. Okay, these educators, I can't believe that they have not heard this from a 92-year-old black gentleman named Thomas Sewell. I have really sort of trembling when I talk about him because he is so intelligent, and everybody knows about him. But they must not know that he has said, "Money doesn't make that much a difference." He has said, he has told us that the United States, and I'm sure we're part of the United States still, spends the most, and we're the lowest. So really, education really has to be looked at. It's not necessarily buildings, although I don't think we should have crumbling buildings. But I think the educational people here in Lynchburg need to understand that this has not happened just overnight and that you all we get to blame. If you all are able to help some of this, I think we should give you great credit. And I've been concerned tonight that the word "citizen" has not been used much. I am retired. Retired a long time ago. But the citizens who elected, they elected you all. And we care about the children. But like Veronica said, you know, the parents are the ones that are supposed to take care of the children. And one person commented, "They're our children." No, they're the parents' children. We sort of help them with that. But they do not belong to the city, and that's the problem with our country. We're talking about, I think some other political people have said, "They're our children. They're not our children." We need to help the parents so that they can do what needs to be done, and we need to really support children, and particularly fathers. Larry Elder talks about this all the time, how important the men are, and I thoroughly agree with him. Thank you.
That's all? Do we have any voicemails?
I do, Mr. Mayor. I've got 10 voicemails. Again, we'll look at time limitations as well. The first is from Connor Kenniston.
I'm calling about the public hearing on Tuesday, April 22nd. Agenda number 1.3, 2026 Budget Operating and Capital Public Hearing. My name is Connor Kenniston, and I'm a resident of 231 West Moreland Street in Lynchburg. I'm calling to urge council members to support full funding for Lynchburg City Schools, the Lynchburg Public Libraries, and the proposed cost-of-living adjustment to the city employees who keep our city running. Of course, such measures cost money, but that's money worth spending. Some members of council are trying to run the city on the cheap, cutting tax rates again, and then claiming we don't have the money for public goods we all benefit from, like pools, schools, and libraries. But we all know that doing things on the cheap often costs more in the long run. It's like a home repair. Cut corners now, and you'll pay double later. Or like regularly eating fast food. Seems cheaper today, but it ends up costing you far more in doctor's bills and your quality of life when you think in terms of the long term. Let's not rename our city Mc-Lynchburg. I don't want cheap government. I want good government. I don't want cheap schools. I want quality schools. I don't want cheap libraries. I want 21st century libraries that can open worlds of possibility for learners of all ages. And I don't want the cheapest tax rate. I want a fair tax rate so we can fund the services we need to make Lynchburg a vibrant, thriving city now and for decades to come. Let's be smart and think long term. Please support our schools, libraries, and city employees. Thank you.
The next is from Julie Hemstreet.
Hello. My name is Julie Hemstreet, and I am calling in reference to the city council meeting date on Tuesday, April 22nd. The agenda item I'm interested in is 1.3, colon, FY 2026 Budget Operating and Capital Public Hearing. My name is Julie Hemstreet. My residence address is 3 Riverview Place, Lynchburg, Virginia, 24503. I live in Ward 2, and I would like to express my support for including the Lynchburg Public Library in the Budget Capital Improvement Plan for the 25-26 fiscal year. Again, my name is Julie Hemstreet, 3 Riverview Place, and I would like to express my strong support for including the library in the Budget Capital Improvement Plan for 25-26. Thank you very much.
The next is from Sue Stengel.
My name is Sue Stengel. I live in Ward 3. I'm calling about council meeting on April 22nd, the budget hearing, agenda items 1 and 3. When the city council lowered the property tax rate two years ago, it resulted in underfunding our school system and both the city operations and capital improvement budget. As the city manager and his staff struggle to perform the minimum duties, they also struggled to keep our city a great place to live. And here we are again with forces disregarding the care and nurturing of our city by pushing a tax cut. The wealthy people of this city do not need a tax cut. The lower-income people do. Why not figure out a way to help lower-income people with all of their costs? Rent controls and subsidies would assist many in this city with making ends meet. The 1970s brought the tearing down of the beautiful library in my hometown. I will never forget the glass floors on the second-floor balcony. It was moved to an old Sears &amp; Roebuck building where it still resides. That's a familiar story here in Lynchburg. My hometown is the same size as Lynchburg and has similar demographics, but it has kept up with the renovations of the library. The roof doesn't leak, and the bathrooms are modern and in good working order. The services offered in the library are invaluable to people of this city who rely on it when the cost of internet service is just too high. They use it to check email and apply for jobs. Children are able to dream in a public library and let their imagination soar in ways that they can't find at home. They can explore and pursue current and future hobbies. They can read books to help them figure out what they want to be when they grow up. They can find characters in books who are just like them, who are, who they aspire to be like. The kids need you. They need you to give them a library where their minds can soar. Please approve the renovation of the Lynchburg Public Library. My family was able to afford a membership at a private pool for us to hang out at. for us to hang out at during summer months. My siblings and I participated in school sports during the year and during summer months, for me, that was swim team. That swim club kept us kids busy, gave us an opportunity to stay in good physical condition, and gave mom much-needed free time from at least the older of four children. Miller Park Pool is in bad shape. A pool leaking 800,000 gallons of water would be illegal out West. It is rundown and needs an upgrade to the level of local private pools. Our kids deserve that. Give our kids the opportunity to have fun, stay out of trouble, and stay healthy by approving the Miller Park Pool replacement plan. Thank you.
The next one is from Ellen Nygaard.
My name is Ellen Nygaard. I live in Ward four. My address is 65 Clopton Court. And I'm calling in reference to the city budget, the CIP, Capital Improvement Plan. And I wish to offer my support for the capital improvement plan as proposed by Winterbenda and the city staff to fully fund the city schools, the Lynchburg Public Library renovation, and the Miller Park Pool renovation. And I urge the city council not to lower the tax rate any further until these plans have been completed. Thank you. Once again, my name is Ellen Nygaard.
Number five is from Patrick Earl, representing concerned parents.
Hello, my name is Patrick Earl at Ward one, speaking on behalf of a large group of concerned parents. Dear council, thank you for your time. I wanted to comment on this April 22nd public comment. Sadly, I'll spend most of my time talking about events that happened on social media last week. The Lynchburg Democratic Committee made a post advocating for our community spaces in the budget. This included a picture of a half-buried Riverside Pool. The caption read, "We all know what it looks like when we close pools." The problem with that is I don't think that our whole community does know. In 1961, to avoid integrating our three public swimming pools, the city closed them and filled them with dirt, never to be used again. The communities pool, Jefferson Park Pool, was filled with trash, garbage, the decay of which pollutes the neighborhood to this very day. And this event's traumatic to our city. And the repercussions include multigenerational deaths of children swimming in unsafe areas or drowning due to the inability to swim. While I didn't appreciate the use of this event, LDC's post did have a point. And you should know that Councilman Kurt Deemer responded to this post with a laughing emoji. And I was willing to give him the benefit of the doubt when pressed, he responded with, and I quote, "Talk about stuck in the past," a laugh-crying emoji. Let's use this as a learning opportunity. History matters. He then went on to describe how it was, the pools were closed because of an African-American swim demonstration at Miller Park. Now, while this may seem like that's what actually happened, it is just a continuation of a racist narrative people like Mr. Deemer have perpetuated since 1961. They want us to believe they closed the pools because our black community was going to protest, and that is wrong. The white leaders in the city wanted to defy federal court order to integrate our pools. So when black children tried swimming in a white pool, white adults closed the pools and blamed them, even blamed them when people died because of the closures. For more context, here is an excerpt of Philip Lightfoot Scruggs, editor of the News &amp; Advance, comments on the closure of Jefferson Park Pool. "This valuable recreational facility," and I quote, "was cut off July 4th due to what was called a 'wade-in' by Negroes at Miller Park Pool. Because of this, it is not enough to see where the response, it is easy enough to see where the responsibility lies in the drowning of a Negro boy, Brian Harvey Robinson, on Thursday afternoon in an abandoned canal lock. The boy was a former patron of Jefferson Pool of Negroes. And in the present atmosphere of the move to desegregate public facilities, there will be no integration of public swimming pools. That is declared policy known for a long time. The result of inordinate pressure, disruptive efforts to work out solutions that can be workable has brought about a tragedy. We are deeply sympathetic with the family of Brian Robinson." And this is the sentiment we're going to come back to. The speech may be flowery, but a laughing emoji is just as dismissive and just as racist. While I think its actions should disqualify Mr. Deemer from office, it will not happen, but maybe council can learn from history. The libraries and pools are not just places. They teach essential, lifesaving skills to our children. Please fund them. Thank you for your time.
The next is from Emily Muniz.
Good afternoon. I'm calling in reference to the council meeting on April 22nd, Agenda Item three, Fiscal Year 2026 Budget Operating and Capital Public Hearing. My name is Emily Muniz and I live on Heritage Drive in Ward one precinct three. I appreciate that the city is investing in the public library, particularly when it seems the opposite is true nationally. My husband and I moved to Lynchburg, where he grew up, back in 2009. The library became my sanctuary as I navigated finding a job and not knowing many people. It was and is a place that I frequent at least once a week at both locations, as well as virtually through the Libby and Hoopla app. Through the Lynchburg Public Library, I found a passion in reading and community as the library is one of the very few places where people can go to be educated, entertained, and even seek refuge. We have a nine-year-old daughter now who loves visiting the library and reading and enjoys the educational events the library holds, including one this past weekend where she got to see and learn about an owl and a hawk in real life. Where else can one go do that for free? The main branch of the library is very outdated and does not exhibit all the wonder and beauty that's inside. It is time for the outside to shine and show Lynchburg residents and visitors what we have to offer. Thank you.
The next is from Karen Warren.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Karen Warren. I live at 412 Elmwood Avenue and I've been a resident of Ward five for over 20 years. I have three children who've gone through the Lynchburg City Schools and who have all loved our Lynchburg Public Libraries. I am calling in reference to the council meeting on April 22nd. The agenda item that I wish to speak about is, Fiski is 1.3, Fiscal Year 2026 Budget Operating and Capital Public Hearing. I would like to ask the council to please consider carefully how vital the Lynchburg Public Library is to our city and to all of its residents as you prepare to vote on the CIP 2020, on the CIP. Last year, the library saw well over 100,000 visitors, the circulation of hundreds of thousands of materials, tens of thousands of computer sessions. People in Lynchburg looking for jobs, residents asking for help paying taxes, people looking for a safe, warm place to spend hours with their children, residents getting meals during the summer. All of this available free of charge. This is one of the most important community and civic spaces that our city has to offer, and it may be the most democratic space in the city. Everyone is welcome. There's no barrier to entry. I continue to hear from the city council that we need to empower parents and making the library a welcoming, inviting space does just that. All of my children grew up using the library. One of them learned to take his first steps in the Lynchburg Public Library. So a vibrant public library is an enticement for young families. We need to grow our city and for members of our community from every age and background to enjoy being together. Thank you for taking the time to consider my comments.
Number eight is from Ann Wilson.
My name is Ann Wilson. I'm a Lynchburg resident and live in Ward four. My address is 77 Clopton Court, Lynchburg 24503. I'm speaking about the meeting on the budget that will be held on Tuesday, April the 22nd on Item 1.3. I want to express my support for the city manager's budget as is, specifically the things in the CIP plan involving library renovations, public school money for renovations, and any renovations needed to go to Miller Park Pool. I'm particularly interested in the library renovations. Our library is, is old and it has had minimal updates over the years. It is falling behind in terms of structural needs and modernization. In my opinion, a library is so important to a community. It is, it is a hub and all people in the community can benefit from it. And the current library does an amazing job with what they have to work with in terms of meeting the needs of all residents. Many residents don't have internet access at home or access to a computer, and it's a place they can come. I have lived in this community for over 40 years and my children and I both have accessed the library on many, 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 many occasions. And now my grandchildren are taking advantage of it. So I really feel like it needs to be modernized. It, it needs a lot of structural changes. There's problems with the roof and the water system. I, I think it's, it's at an important location in the middle of our city and it services a lot of the community. And my husband and I both are strongly supporting that these renovations that are in the budget continue to stay there and be used to modernize our library. Thank you for your time. Thank you. Bye-bye.
The next one's from Trudy McDaniel.
I'm calling about the budget hearing, April 22nd. My name is Trudy McDaniel. I'm a resident of Lynchburg, living in Ward three. I want to ask that the city council cease reducing taxes at the expense of our public schools and libraries. Indeed, I think it is important to increase spending for both. I want to encourage full funding for the library renovations and fully support Dr. Ben Copeland's perspective on the needs of our city schools. I've noted that my counselor, Mr. Kurt Deemer, and others on the city council hold negative views about much in this city, but most particularly certain minority groups. While raised as Southern Baptist, I had the good fortune to attend public schools and to have a gay classmate who, from elementary school through high school graduation, despite being bullied and picked on, demonstrated remarkable integrity and compassion and respect for others. Similarly, throughout my long life, I'm now 80, I've had friends and neighbors whom Mr. Deemer and who share his views would denigrate because of their non-heterosexual orientation. While living in Brooklyn, New York many years ago, my mother and father spoke with a group of parents and grandparents about the unique challenges they had faced rearing their identical twin sons. They shared videos that had been taken of the boys as toddlers that showed that despite their identical appearances, there was a stark difference between them. One was typically boyish in his actions and mannerisms, but his identical twin, even as a toddler, had incredibly effeminate mannerisms and was attracted to girly things. They told of an occasion while the boys were preschool age when the effeminate child had spoken of himself as a girl. When he was told he was not a girl and that he had, he and his brother were both boys, he just cried and kept asking why he wasn't a girl. A small percentage of us are born with differences that can be witnessed. If you are an Olympic athlete, your differences are celebrated despite their rarity. These are seen as normal. Therein lies the problem. There has been a demonization of children whose differences, Mr. Deemer, others like him, seem incapable of viewing through any lens but imagined acts of sexual intimacy. No child wants to be different in ways that invite bullying and rejection. And the suggestions that books about non-heterosexual characters are there to groom heterosexual kids and turn them gay, that is pure hogwash. Indeed, if grooming were that powerful, we would all be heterosexual. You think only if sexual intimacy insists that that is, that is not heterosexual in nature, it is sinful and that they are sinners and dangers.
Our last is from John Feas.
Hi, my name's John Feas and I call to speak in favor of the city manager's proposed budgets and all of the projects in it. But specifically, I would also like to speak in favor of the infrastructure projects on Bedford Avenue. We have spent considerable money, as well as others, in the area to develop that area. The infrastructure is behind on public safety and it would be a great addition to that situation if, if we could go ahead and improve the infrastructure and, and add these particular projects into the city budget. I thank you for your attention. Sorry I could not be there tonight. Good night.
Those are all the voicemails I have pertaining to this item, Mr. Mayor.
Must have been, Marty wanted to speak to you a second.
I have a quick question for you, Mr. Bennett.
You can do it.
So.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the city council.
I've got the floor, Mr. Farady. I've, I've got the floor. Thank you very much. Mr. Bennett, I'm not going to call him down. I have the floor. Thank you.
You can declare the public hearing closed.
Yes, yes.
That's all I'm trying to say.
The public hearing is now closed. Our next regular scheduled meeting will be.
Hold on, Mr. Mayor.
On 29/4.
Hold on, Mr. Mayor.
At IT Conference Center.
Hold on, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. When is the first reading for the budget scheduled? Because we had a couple people come up and, and bring that up. I'm just curious about that.
May 13th.
All right, so we talked earlier about a real estate tax rate. And now we're barreling down on a May 13th first reading of the budget. And, and to be kind of frank and clear, it seems to me like this is trying to be rammed down our throats. Now, I'm not saying you're doing it. That's not what I'm saying. But that's what it feels like. Because if we're told, hold off until May 13th to do a rate, but right now that's scheduled to be the first reading, I think it would probably be appropriate, if we got to discuss a rate, to do that before the first reading of the budget. So, you know, I just think that makes sense. And then, you know, one other question I have is, and this one's for the city attorney. What, what's the code section that we use for the effect on rate? You know, when the assessment results in increase? Are you familiar with that?
It's 58, Virginia Code Section 58.1-3321.
Okay, so subsection C of that says additionally, in a county, city, or town that conducts its reassessment more than once every four years, which is us, right? The notice for any public hearing held pursuant to this section shall be published on a different day and a different notice from any notice published for the annual budget hearing. Are we supposed to be doing these on separate distinct days? I'm asking that question.
So the interpretation I've taken and what my understanding is from past history, and I might, I might draw from Donna over here for her expertise. But when it's a separate date for the advertisements, my understanding, they do that.
Okay.
And as far as the times and the days, the interpretation of that statute is to advertise it at a different time,
Got it.
Which we do.
Okay.
So it is, it is after, you know, of course, the, the first one. And I did, I do want to follow up for clarification on a question you'd had earlier, Councilman Missions. The reason this issue came up this time as, as it relates to not taking action, like to vote, to make a motion and vote to do an establishment of the tax rate at a later date or setting it and directing staff to come back before the budget hearing, excuse me, the budget public hearing. The legislative history shows that the budget advertisement requirements changed in 2024. So as part of those changes, from what I understand, and I think we, Donna and her staff and I had talked about this, we had to advertise the real estate and the personal property levies as part of that. So that's why I think it's becoming issues because now, you know, my interpretation of the code is, is that citizenry are permitted to also address the taxes as part of the budget public hearing.
Sure. So do you know if there's any Attorney General's opinions or anything out there that might, you know, say that this is supposed to be a separate, these are supposed to be separate and distinct events? Are you aware of that, if that exists?
Not, not that I'm aware of. I do know, like I said, the interpretation for the city and, and the practice of what they've done is just to advertise them at different times.
Got it.
And hold them one after the other.
Thank you. Thank you for those questions. So with that, you know, obviously, you know, it seems pretty clear that there's going to be a debate about the tax rate. It, it sounds like. I, I just don't feel like it's appropriate that our next meeting would be the first reading. So I'm going to make it as a motion that we amend the budget calendar, unless you want to do it by yourself. And what I'm asking is if we move the first reading to June 10th and the second reading to June 24th, are you able to do that? Or do we need to do that and act as a body?
So what I'd offer this side of that motion, and I don't know whether or not this helps, is that, and remember when I was talking to our Madam Clerk about, there is programmed into this draft schedule a meeting that I propose, the, the.
Work session.
It's a, it's a work session.
So in, in, in the, the rules of procedure that we changed two years ago, we can't vote without getting like a supermajority to allow us to vote in a work session. So, so I'm just being very clear.
Sure. Sure.
So the question I have is, should we amend the budget calendar to give us more time for that first reading and second reading? Because it just doesn't seem to me like, it's just not logical to say, we're going to come in and talk about a tax rate during the meeting where we have the first reading of the budget, because we're supposed to be voting on a budget.
I understand, and there is a provision, again, this is hazy, that you're supposed to adopt your fiscal year budget, there are 30 days this side of the end of the fiscal year, so that would be May, that you would have to do so. And I don't know whether or not that provision, and maybe I've said that before, and Donna, I don't know whether or not that's in fact true. So it would have to be 30 days this side, so July 1 is when you implement your new fiscal year budget, right? So 30 days would be, it'd be for, and it'd be in May that you need to adopt your budget.
So what you're saying is we have to adopt the budget by the end of May?
And I'm going to make sure...
Beginning of the fiscal year.
Just beginning of the fiscal year. So I think, yeah, we've got time. If you and your peers want to move readings and/or discussions about, you know, the first reading and the second reading into June, you're welcome to do so.
I mean, I think that it would be prudent to do that. If there's, if we're not settled on the revenue side of things, it's kind of hard to...
Well, absolutely. I think I heard you say, Mr. Missions, about pushing it. My intent is not to, I mean, this process, if you remember, began well before the calendar year. And so I've tried to afford you and your peers as much time as you needed. That's why I built in those additional meetings. So if this body wants to move into June...
When we had one canceled...
I'm sorry?
One of those additional meetings was canceled.
Okay.
So I understand that additional meetings are built in, but there was a, nobody asked me if we should have canceled that meeting. It was canceled. I don't know who canceled it or why it was canceled, but it was canceled. And now here we are, and the calendar, the budget calendar that your office published and was put out to the public and is on the website, says that we have a first reading, which is a vote on the budget on May 13. And we don't even, we haven't even settled what the revenue is necessarily. So, you know, I just want to make sure that there's nothing going on here that's trying to kind of prevent that debate about the tax rate and the vote on it, because that seems like what happened earlier. And, you know, so be it, but, you know, we need to have a robust debate about how much we're going to take from our citizens. Are we going to increase taxes by $9.6 million on our citizens? Or are we not? It's that simple. Or is it going to be somewhere in the middle? And so I'm asking, do we need to vote to change that calendar, or is that something you can do on your own?
I would probably suggest not voting to change the calendar. If, certainly if you wanted to meet more, it might be prudent to just do special meetings instead because of the advertisement requirements that are connected with changing current meetings. So that might be, it might be easier from an administrative standpoint to do specials.
So you think it might be more prudent to do a special meeting before the first reading of the budget to set the tax rate?
And certainly you could, or what you could do is, I mean, yeah, I guess we did vote to approve the calendar with the first meeting. It would probably make more sense to do it if that's something you all were really interested in doing to have more work sessions and meetings.
That's kind of what I'm getting at. So we acted as a body to approve your calendar, which was a good calendar. We just got thwarted from setting the tax rate tonight, unless somebody were to reconsider that, we could change that right now. If somebody that was on the prevailing side chose to reconsider that, that's the only method we have. If I'm correct, is that right, Mr. City Attorney? If somebody that was on the prevailing side of killing the motion, were to, you know, to make a motion to reconsider, that could be brought back so we could get this done and knocked out tonight.
That's right.
Otherwise, we'd probably have to change the calendar, because we can't vote on a budget, right? If we don't have a revenue side of that budget, I don't feel like that's, you know, I mean, it's so, and currently our rules of procedure don't allow us to set a rate in a work session. You know, we're not allowed to vote in a work session without a supermajority to do so, and I'm just not comfortable with any of that, because what's going to happen is, then it's going to take a supermajority, once we get to the work session, to say, oh yeah, we can go ahead and debate a rate and vote on it, because that's the way our rules are set up, unless we suspend the rules of procedure. So am I right on that?
Yes, sir.
Is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
So it's really kind of, you know, right now, the way things are set is there's no opportunity for this body to debate and set a rate, unless we do a special meeting or unless somebody were to have a motion to reconsider that was on the prevailing side, or we change the budget calendar, either one. I'm just trying to figure out which way we should go, but I do not want to be thwarted from an opportunity for this governing body to debate and set a rate. And that's what I feel like is happening. So I'm asking, I guess between you and you, what do you think the best way forward is to...
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
I misspoke, so the clerk corrected me. It sounds like there wasn't a formal vote on the calendar itself.
Correct.
So it could be we could add, add without additional advert, but it would still be a special meeting in doing that.
Do we have a meeting made in six?
That's not a meeting, that's a budget work session.
Yeah, and the last one was canceled.
And the last one was canceled, and we can't. Our rules of procedure are currently set up in a way that prevent us from acting and voting without a supermajority approval in a work session.
But if a special meeting could be added to the six, that we can make adjustments.
So...
Mr. Farady. Mr. Mayor.
It's 11:30. Before the end of my second term in 2029, 2028, I pray I have a budget hearing that ends before midnight. No bomb threats helps, by the way. So here's where I'm coming from. You released your budget when?
You're calling...
I know, I know.
That would be the second Tuesday.
There's a reason I'm asking, because I don't know.
Yes, second Tuesday, March.
Okay. What's today, at least for the next 30 minutes?
April 22.
April 22. Have you received any questions about what it would do and how your budget would look like directly if you set the real estate rate at X? Yes or no, please?
No.
Okay, so we've been doing this for how long, to my colleagues? And you haven't received...
I asked you some questions.
Hold on, no. I have the floor to my colleagues. Thank you. Hold on. No, no, no.
You gave me a yes or no.
I asked...
It's such a nuanced question.
Mr. Manager, I appreciate, I know what you're driving at. We have been told if you have work session budget questions, you submit them by email so they can be filed up in the memos, so they are written into concrete. If you go to a website right now, you can see all the budget questions that have been asked. Show me one where we have actually asked in writing, so the public can see what it looks like, what the impacts are. You haven't gotten one actual question in that regard. That's what I'm driving at. Then pull up the record and look at it, because I don't, we've been sitting around for weeks, and I said it publicly yesterday, where have the questions been? And now it's framed on us that we're the ones delaying or trying to force y'all's hand? Guys, we have a process. If you want to meet more, let's go. Let's meet more. But this sounds like it should have been an email. This sounds like something that needs to be hashed out one-on-one, because I have to go to work in the morning. So does everybody else. If you have things you need to address, address it. Let's close this thing out. I've outlined on my Facebook page exactly where I want to go with this. And quite frankly, I'm really ticked off at my at-large representative for consuming so much time when I'm supposed to be listening tonight. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Missions actually is supposed to represent me, too. And I'm disappointed. Tonight was about listening. If you want to see where I'm going for, how I want to reduce the rates, it's through the Capitol Budget. That's where I'm driving at. It's on my Facebook page. Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Yes.
Well, I guess...
Mr. Manager.
There's no conclusion.
I think it's probably important here, and I don't want to belabor anything, it's 11:30. I'm looking for direction on where you want to go. And what I'd say is, if there's a concern, because I heard that from Mr. Missions, about pressuring anything too fast, too quickly, and that's not what we're trying to accomplish at all. And so to the degree that I can be helpful, and staff can be helpful, we do have the pending meeting, that's a work session. We heard quite a bit this evening. I will say that if I missed a question, I know Vice Mayor Deemer was looking or what have you, that's on me, right? That's on me. And I'll make sure that we get that. But I will lean into, because I heard quite a bit this evening, to make sure that that work session's robust, and if there are subsequent decisions about the calendar or the schedule, the body wants me to entertain or kind of put together, I'll be prepared for that. And thank you for allowing me to speak after you've gathered up, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting, April 29, 4 o'clock at the IT Conference Center.